We are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 11th work session of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Berka Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leece.
Present.
And the woman over there.
Here.
Councilman Bragman.
Excuse me, he's joining right this second.
Councilman Bragman.
Here.
Supervisor Van Skow.
President, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Morning, everyone. We'll start today's session with a public portion where any member of the public may call us to comment on any topic. Today's work session will be completely devoted to topics associated with our airport. If you'd like to make comments about the airport, you could do so during the public portion at the beginning of the meeting. And I will also take callers at the end of each work session topic on the agenda. Those topics include an introduction with our outside airport council, William O'Connor with Cooley. There'll be the annual report on complaints and operations for 2020 that'll be presented by HMMH. The draft economic analysis of the airport will be presented by HRNA. An update on the Superbun site at the airport will be presented by outdoor account, outside council, Nick Rigano. And the special VFR, that's visual flight rules discussion, will be presented by our airport outside council, William O'Connor with Cooley. That'll be followed by the liaison reports, and we do have a few resolutions today. At this point, I'll go to you, Michael. Do we have any callers currently on the line?
Yes, we have six callers on hold. I can unmute the first caller right now with their phone number ending in 1997.
Great.
Hi, my name is Jim Underwood. I live in Laurel on the North Fork. And I'm just, you know, I submit complaints daily. But this spring, and particularly on any nice sunny day, I'm out in my backyard and it sounds like a buzzing of bees. The seaplanes just never stop. I'm hoping that at some point, seaplanes could be redirected in the manner that helicopters have been, although there has been a slight uptick in helicopters coming through as well. Thank you very much.
Thanks for calling in, Jim. Next caller, please, Michael?
Yes, I'll unmute the next caller. The last four digits of their phone are 6388. Hello, caller with the last four digits 6388. You're live. Could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Cheryl Gold. I live at 54.
Excuse me, Ms. Gold, if you could please mute the audio.
I'm trying to.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Gold. I live at 54. Fifty, 54 Wireless Road in East Hampton.
Excuse me, Ms., if you could please lower the audio of the television or computer in the background, please. There's an echo.
Um, I, I, I did. Okay, I muted. Hello? Hello?
Morning, Cheryl. How are you?
Uh, good morning, Peter, and good morning, town board members. First of all, I wanted to thank you very much for um, scheduling this work session on the airport and providing the public for their engagement. There's a delay in all of this, so it's a little difficult. Um, I'm hearing this feedback to myself, but I'll try to move forward.
Excuse me, if I could just interrupt, Ms.
Because I, I would just like to, at the outset, state that I have reviewed both of the consultant's reports. I had a couple of comments about the HMMH report specifically. We have constantly requested that HMMH include a breakdown of their land planes so that we understand the category broken out to include jets. We've asked for this month after month, year after year. It just doesn't seem to make sense that the airport managers' report can break out jets and HMMH refuses to do so, something about their, their approach to reporting analysis. But we, as you know, we've had a huge increase in jet aircraft traffic at the airport in the last few years. Bigger jets, more jets, and now we see this big uptick in the off, quote unquote, off-season, uh, which was just released, um, for the last three months compared to 2019, 2020. So I would like to suggest that they are our consultants. We, the taxpayers, pay them. It seems to me that the board ought to be able to require that they break out land planes category. And the other thing is, and I already alluded to this, um, the July the 4th, September 30th, uh, ex, uh, implementation period really is not relevant any longer. So I'm not sure why in the, in this current reporting that they're doing, that they're still using something that's irrelevant to what's actually happening, because we're all aware of the fact that people have relocated. The traffic patterns, uh, activity is totally different. So those are my two comments for that report. And I really appreciate, uh, again, the session and, and letting me make a public comment. Thank you.
Cheryl, thanks for calling in. We appreciate you taking the time to comment. Michael, do we have any other callers?
We sure do. Moving on, the next caller's last four digits are 7563. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello, caller with the last four digits 7563. You're live. Are you there? Their line's open. Hearing nothing, Mr. Supervisor. I'll move on.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 4337. I'll unmute that now.
Good morning, Mr. Supervisor and town board members. My name is John Benedict. I've been a full-time resident of East Hampton Town for 29 years, and I live in Clearwater Beach. I am a homeowner here for the last 22 years. I have one comment about the airport. I didn't know what your agenda was for today. But the comment is, um, about the low-flying plane that flew over my house while I was making dinner on the afternoon or evening of April the 13th. And, um, what I couldn't understand was why nobody, uh, was sent from the police department over to the airport, considering it is a short distance, and waiting for the pilot to land and seeing what he was doing and placing him under arrest for that behavior that was very dangerous. And he was barely missing the treetops as he made eight passes over the area where I live. And all the neighbors were really upset about it. I did call your office and left a message and explain what happened and, um, either one of your secretaries or a personnel, a woman, answered, and she said, you know, it was being taken care of. But there was a pretty accurate description. Luckily, the police officer in Sag Harbor, the woman that saw the whole thing and took pictures of it and contacted him on his cell phone. She probably, they did have a, a speed reading on him. She might have had a radar gun and said he was doing between 100 and 160 miles an hour. And I believe that was probably the speed he was traveling over here also. So I, I would like to see that, you know, the town also, not just Sag Harbor, but the town should, uh, bring up charges against him. And, uh, I know they, uh, did suspend him from using the airport for a while. That, that was the first thing I wanted to bring up. Uh, I have a few other things here, um, about, uh, the second item is about the landscaping, uh, requirements that have, have they been finalized yet? Or are they, is that still open? And will there be anything printed in the newspaper when you finalize the rulings on landscaping?
So, uh, to your first, uh, point and question, uh, that individual who was flying dangerously over our town in Sag Harbor Village has been suspended from being able to use the airport in East Hampton for no less than 90 days. We are also pursuing the possibility of other charges. The FAA is in charge of airspace. There have been complaints filed with the FAA. This pilot may lose his license as a result of the careless, dangerous activities. Uh, we certainly sympathize and are appalled by that action, and can certainly understand why people on the ground would have been concerned. A very reckless act. I don't think it's indicative of most of the, um, behavior certainly of local pilots, um, that we've seen, but great cause for concern. On your other question, the, uh, you're referring to the leaf blower legislation, which would ban the use of gasoline and diesel-powered leaf blowers between the dates of May 20th and September 20th of each year, and with no leak blowing of any kind, uh, on Sundays. And that has taken effect, and we are in the process of continually putting out information. There'll be Facebook, uh, Instagram, Twitter posts, as well as the information on the website. We sent a press release to the press. That was covered in the news, local newspapers. Uh, but we understand with any new legislation, there's a period of time that was required to educate the public as to the changes. So, um, that will be an ongoing effort. And, uh, that's the status of the leaf blower legislation.
Okay. I do have a couple other items I wanted to bring up. Uh, I've been saving these for a couple of, few weeks, I should say. Um, the, the third item is, uh, about the Camps, Camp Hero sewer system. And, uh, you would thought that the, uh, piping they used was, uh, orangeberg, which it isn't, because I was there. We, I, uh, was a service manager of a plumbing and heating business in Montauk for many years. And we had the job of locating a blockage in one of the residents' main lines coming out of their house. And as Tom Rule had mentioned at that particular meeting, um, a root had grown into the main line and blocked it completely. So we had to have an excavator come, dig it up. And that piping is, uh, is called transite. And it's a combination of cement and asbestos. It's very brittle-type piping. And it wasn't used for very long for different, uh, for different applications. Um, but it was used there at Campiro, at least at that one location. I imagine they probably used it throughout the system. The, uh, years ago, they also used that actually for water mains in downtown Montauk. Because I've worked with the Water Authority on, uh, connecting water mains and services to a lot of commercial buildings down there. And they said that was used. They've abandoned most of it there. Uh, they've gone over to plastic or cast iron piping. And, uh, it was also, another place that was used in Montauk was in the, uh, the slabs of the Lejerama homes, which were, uh, um, offered to, uh, people as an inexpensive, uh, summer place. Had mainly used in the, uh, Colloden Beach area, but there are many others throughout Montauk. They buried this piping in the slab or, uh, the hot air furnaces, the General Electric LP gas furnaces that were used to heat those houses.
Any other questions, of course, today?
Yes, um, let's see, um. Yeah, there was, uh, another one. I understand, I, I had read that, uh, there's a new head of code enforcement, which is good. I, I had some questions. I, I wanted to know who I could contact to ask about some lighting questions and about fences, gates, and firms on town easements on the sides of the roads. And, uh, I know in the past I've called code enforcement and building, and nobody seemed to give me correct answers. I even called, left messages for the secretary at the Archi, Architectural Review Board, and I never received a call back.
So if the question is about what's acceptable, allowable lighting, you could contact either the building department or the planning department on that question? In terms of, uh, the location of fences, that's a clearly a building department, uh, question? And you would have to, you know, contact them about it. I don't know the specifics of what your inquiry is about, but they, they should be able to give you the answers. If you have a problem with that, feel free to call my office, and I'll help you get the answers that you need.
Okay. And then one other question is about, uh, public beaches. I know, uh, that the, uh, there was, uh, it, with one of the previous administrations, they had recommended condemnation of the beach from Nap Peak Lane to the western boundary of Nap Peak State Park. If, uh, the homeowners, uh, won or, uh, won, uh, on appeal, the right to close off that beach. What's, uh, happening with that?
So that's, uh, still an ongoing matter, uh, before the courts. The town has appealed the judge's decision in that case, uh, where he ruled on the homeowner's appeal. And, um, so that's, that's basically where it is. It's still in court.
What will happen for the summer season as far as the use of that beach now? Can people use it?
That's still under discussion. It certainly, uh, can be used in terms of the use of vehicles, though. That, that remains to be seen.
Right. Okay. And one last thing was about the, uh, there are two different sewer systems that they're, uh, different. The village and the town are considering installing one in downtown Montauk and one in the village of East Hampton. And, uh, it's not quite as simple as it seems. I lived in, uh, Islip for many years when they installed the, um, Southwest Sewer District in Suffolk County. And that ran all the way from County Line in Amityville to, uh, the Hatcher Spur of the Parkway in the East Islip Great River area. And that was a major catastrophe, you could say, installing that. And it was much simpler, uh, and seemed much easier the way they described it at first, but the roads were torn up for the longest time. And even to this day, they never compacted the soil properly before they repaved the roads, so the roads continue to sink. They've had to fix them many, many times. But it was a lot easier to do it there because everybody had their cesspools, um, connected. And they were using the cesspools or septic systems while the new sewer system was installed. But, um, I was, I bring this up because, you know, if they ever have to re, redesign the system at Campiro other than putting in pumps and, uh, this, you know, would be difficult there because nobody has cesspools now. I know it's not good to leave, you know, this transite pipe in the ground having asbestos in it, but the government used a lot of asbestos for different reasons, uh, back in the days.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, John, but we're gonna need to move on. I have 13 callers waiting on the line now. Appreciate you taking the time to call us today and appreciate those comments that you've made.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. It's, uh, great talking with you, and, uh, all of you have a great day and, uh, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you very much. You be well. Michael, if we could go to the next caller now, please?
Yes, the next caller's last four digits are 2617. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, good morning, Peter and the board. This is John Corain from Sag Harbor.
Hi, John.
Hi, Peter. Thanks again for engaging your neighbors from, uh, both the South Fork and, and the North Fork and towns beyond on this critically important issue. Um, as probably most of the people on this call know, is this is a, this airport's been a problem for over a decade. And I think what we're learning is it's not just a noise problem now. It's, it's a broader pollution and quality of life issue. And I just want to call again and reiterate my appreciation to, uh, to you and the board members. And, and I just want to encourage you with, with all this being learned about this and the fragile nature of our ecosystem here on the beautiful east end of Long Island, is I just want to express my encouragement for repurposing that airport from, uh, what today, by, by many standards, is a, is a great liability to something that would be a great environmental, uh, piece of land, uh, for generations to come. So, uh, keep up the good work. Uh, you've got a lot of support from your neighbors to the west to do something bold here. And, uh, I think we all appreciate there'll probably be a lot of pressure on you to try to keep the status quo. But I think what we're learning and in this study today particularly, what a tremendous opportunity the town of East Hampton has to do something great. So thank you.
Thanks for calling in, John. And at this point, we're more than 20 minutes into the meeting. And what I would like to do is just move forward with the presentations and the work session agenda. And I will again go to public, um, comments in between each topic. Uh, but we have all of our outside professionals here waiting on the line. And, uh, so with that, I would like to introduce William O'Connor, who's outside counsel for the airport and town board.
Uh, Peter, if I can, I just want to make a short, uh, comment, if I can, about what, what we're doing here before Bill O'Connor speaks.
Please go ahead, Jeff.
Um, you know, I just wanted to let the folks at home know that we've, uh, the reports that you got are, uh, initial reports. Um, uh, the, uh, traffic report probably is more predictable than, uh, the economic report. But that, we wanted to lay some facts on the table for the public to have as we move forward in the discussion process. And we are going to have further opportunities for public comment, so it's not, you know, one and done. You either get your comment in today or it's over. Also, I wanted to assure the public that we don't have a hard stop deadline in September of this year when the grant assurances expire. Um, we can continue, uh, our deliberations and our decision-making. So we're, we have the time that we need to do this in, in an orderly and deliberate way. I wanted to assure everybody that we have not made up our minds. We are presenting, uh, an economic report today. It's an initial report. Um, it's not written in stone. It's not the Ten Commandments. We fully expect that people will, uh, have comments, critiques, questions. And that's fine. It's gonna evolve in light of those comments, critiques, and questions, the same on, on traffic issues. And, um, I, uh, I wanted to say that we, um, we'll, we'll cha, we'll make changes. Uh, and we're also gonna have an opportunity as a board to comment in light of public comment as we, as we move forward, and we intend to do that. And, um, so, and I also wanted to say that I don't think anybody on this board has made up our minds. We need to hear input from the public. It's gonna help us decide. And it may be correct that the, you know, the two extreme positions are, uh, keeping the status quo or, uh, closing the airport. But there are a lot of gradations in between that can easily be considered, and we're open to hearing uh, everyone's viewpoints on, uh, what they think the airport property might be or should be. And that includes, uh, alternative airports as well as no airports, um, as well as keeping the status quo, as well as, uh, shutting the airport down. So I just wanted to make it clear that there's time, and we're gonna do this carefully and thoughtfully. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Jeff. I appreciate your characterizing that. We are looking forward to a fair and open dialogue of all the issues surrounding the airport. And with that, I will hand it over to Bill O'Connor from Cooley, our outside counsel, to take us through the various presentations.
Hi, good morning. Uh, thank you, Peter, and, and thank you, Jeff, for, uh, setting the table for us, um, today. Um, and, you know, at the outset, I'd just like to thank the entire, uh, town board for their hard work and, and support. Um, as we, uh, move forward, uh, with the process of, um, uh, opening for public comment and dialogue, some of the preliminary work, uh, that, uh, our consultants have done, uh, regarding the airport. Um, this is certainly important information, uh, for the public to be aware of, to have the opportunity to provide their views. And of course, for the town board to have, uh, all the information and the tools that it needs to make a decision, uh, about the airport after it is no longer federally obligated. Um, Jeff makes an important point. Um, you know, the end of the summer season is when you first have the opportunity uh, to consider closure or something in between. Um, but there remains much work to be done. Um, before we dive in with, uh, HMMH and their annual presentation of complaints and traffic and HRNA's analysis of, uh, the economic issues related to the airport, um, I wanted to provide a brief update, um, to put these, um, uh, preliminary reports in, in, in context. Um, I'm gonna try to share my screen here. So far, so good. And I think we are good. Um, so as far as an update, um, you know, we've talked about this before in our public meetings about the airport with regard to the Part 161. And, uh, the bottom line with the Part 61 is it's very unlikely to, uh, result in meaningful relief beyond limited curfews. And the process is, is too uncertain. It's quite long and, and costly. The other options that have been explored and talked about, of course, are legislative efforts through, uh, representatives at the federal level. Um, and again, that type of solution, um, and whether it would be successful is, is quite uncertain as well. Um, these two options do, however, remain options for the town. Uh, the other update, um, is what has transpired in 2020, um, with the FAA. There have been, uh, consultations with the FAA by members of the town boards, uh, Peter and, and Jeff and I and, and others have been engaging with the FAA, um, with respect to the town's options for the airport uh, after the grants expire. Uh, we believe these, uh, conversations have been positive and, uh, quite productive. And we are all planning to continue down that path, um, this year as well, after the transition in the administration is, is completed. What we're, um, gonna talk about today primarily is the consideration of alternative, uh, solutions for the airport. Uh, to give, um, the, uh, public an opportunity to, to provide input on that question. Um, and what this is, is essentially a visioning process or a revisioning process to evaluate alternative use for the, for the airport land. Um, and it will be a public process to align those alternative uses with the town's objectives and the interests of its, um, residents. And they will all be pursued, studied, and planned in a open process. Today, we have some preliminary consultant work on the first two bullet points of this slide. Uh, HMMH is gonna present their, um, uh, operations and complaint information, uh, through 2020. And obviously, 2020, um, was a very different year as compared to years past. Um, um, and, and we can see how that comes through in, in the data. Uh, the other, uh, topic today, mentioned in the bullet, is the evaluation of economic impacts of the current airport. So what, uh, what is the economic benefit to the town currently? So what is the economic benefit to the town currently with the airport in its current configuration? And we're going to look at what the economic impact would be if there is no airport and then something in between, which would be a modified airport without commercial operations. You know, with respect to the economic report, it's an initial study. The town chose three scenarios to show the full spectrum of economic impact at the airport. The first scenario is the proxy for the maximum economic impact potentially. And the last scenario is for the minimum economic impact, just so the town board can gauge both ends of the spectrum. While we don't have it on the agenda for today, there is work ongoing to study carbon emissions and air quality in the town of East Hampton with respect to the airport and trying to get a handle on the issue of proportionality. Well, you know, what is the, you know, proportion of folks that use the airport and what that contributes in terms of greenhouse gases and other concerns, environmental, with respect to aircraft? And then the other topic for another day will be an aircraft diversion study. To the extent that the airport is closed or modified, what does that mean for surrounding communities, surrounding airports, and the like? Just to set the stage from a legal perspective, which is really where I come in here, it's pretty straightforward. The airport may legally close after the grants expire after the season. That occurs in 2021. That opens up a lot of options for the town. For example, the application of ANCA, which is the Airport Noise and Capacity Act, which prevents certain access restrictions at airports. The ANCA should not apply if the town closes the airport and decides to reopen it in the future with restricted access as a public or a private use airport. You know, we can accomplish the modified airport if we close it for a miserable amount of time, and then we reopen it. Upon reopening, whether it's a public or private airport, we will have the ability to introduce new restrictions as a condition of opening. This would avoid ANCA issues, and we'd always retain the right to close the airport if challenges to those restrictions arose. The specifics of the modification, whether it's elimination of commercial operations, helicopters, jets, so on, this can all be sorted out with town involvement later after we engage in this public process. But we believe the legal mechanism for doing it is ready. And I want to talk a little bit to conclude about the FAA's acknowledgement of the town's position with respect to this issue. The town, through its consultation with the FAA last year, has received indication from the FAA that it has basically four options here. We can negotiate an agreement for mandatory restrictions. Those are a little bit in conflict. Nobody has to mandatorily agree to these restrictions. But if there were agreement among all operators to certain mandatory restrictions, that voluntary agreement is recognized in Part 161 and would become binding on those operators. The other option we have is what I mentioned. To avoid the ANCA issue is to close the airport after the grant assurances expire and then reopen the airport, whether it be a public use airport or a private use airport. We also have the ability per the FAA to close the airport after the grant assurances expire or we can simply continue to operate the airport as a public use airport. So that's the latest as far as where we are at the airport. I think our next up is HMMH to talk about last year's complaint and operations data. And as I mentioned, you know, there are some significant differences this year as a result of the pandemic. But the issue still remains. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. So next up, we do have HMMH or outside consultants that do the annual complaint and operations study. And we have Mary Ellen Egan.
Actually, good morning, everyone.
Sarah Jensen as well.
Good morning. Yeah, I am just going to turn this over to Sarah, who has done all of the work here. So Sarah will give the presentation.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Sarah.
Thanks. Good morning, everyone. Let me just share my screen and... All right, I think you should all be able to see the presentation now. And as Mary Ellen said, I'm here today with her to talk about the operations and complaints that were recorded during the, what has been called the summer session at East Hampton for the 2020 year. So I'll just first basically go over the analysis and what we looked at. And then we'll move into a high-level discussion of the 2020 operations and complaints. We do have a lot more detailed slides if that's needed. But we wanted to keep it kind of at a high level to focus the discussion and focus the information. So what we looked at was, again, like I said, the summer season, July 2nd to September 30th. And that is basically the Thursday prior to July 4th through the end of September. And we maintain this period to keep consistency through the past analyses that we've done since 2014, 2015. And the data that we collect is from this VNOMs, the Vector Noise and Operations Management System, that's installed at the airport and collects information on the aircraft that take off and land there, as well as providing us some photographic information that we use to perform some of these analyses. The complaint data we get from plane noise and air noise report systems that are run by some external folks. And we use these sources to maintain consistency with the previous implementation periods that we looked at. So mainly, this presentation looks at not only what has been going on in the past summer in 2020, but we also compare it to the 2015 and 2019 implementation periods, the same time periods. So we can see how trends are evolving over time. And as everyone's been mentioning, 2020 is definitely a unique year. And so it's a bit of an outlier in terms of the trends that have been going on since 2019 and prior. So some general observations, some high-level observations about the 2020 periods compared to 2019. Activity decreased by about 35%. That's nearly 7,000 operations, more or less. And we've seen decreases in operations across all categories. The categories in question are, let's see, fixed wing, helicopters, seaplane, multiple aircraft, and other. And I'll take a minute here to address the comment that was made during the public comment period. We are able to break out jets, but we haven't yet done so just to maintain consistency with the previous analyses that we've done. But we do have the ability to do so, and we'll take that under advisement for any future work that we might complete for the town. When we look at the observations for the operations between 2020 and 2015, again, activities decreased this time by about 20% or 3,000 operations. And again, we saw decreases in most of the categories. The only exception there was land planes, which increased by not quite 350 operations, which equates to about 4% from 2015. And the takeaway here is that the overall operations were increasing between 2015 and 2019. But then 2020, because of the pandemic, we saw operations that were slightly below even the 2015 levels. This graphic shows a comparison of the operations over the years that we've been doing this analysis. And as you can see, they were, operations generally were on the rise in pretty much all the categories until this past year. One interesting thing to note might be that the land plane, the count of land planes, it seems to be pretty consistent across the years. But we did see decreases in the helicopter operations and the seaplane operations within the past year. So we'll move on to a high-level discussion of the 2020 implementation period complaints. And again, just to go back over, we have these two reporting systems, plane noise and air noise report. And plane noise allows you, as a complainant, to record your address and record a complaint versus air noise, where you can file a complaint based on either your address, if you can't, if the system isn't able to find an aircraft specifically nearby or if the system's able to specifically associate an aircraft with the complaint, the aircraft's address or the aircraft's location is recorded and the complaint is associated with that. Hope that made sense, but I can definitely talk about that in a little bit more detail if there are any questions or concerns. But the takeaways there are that plane noise and this address or manual complaint for air noise report associates a complaint with a person's address versus these mapped complaints are the ones associated with an aircraft's location. The complaint becomes associated with the location of the aircraft at the point of complaint time. So the high-level observations for these complaints in 2019 versus 2020, complaints decreased by about 40% or nearly 20,000 complaints. Land plane complaints did increase, though, compared to 2019 and as did undefined complaints. But undefined complaints didn't really increase as much. And land planes, they received the most complaints, which generally would make sense, could make sense because the operations were the larger percentage of all operations there. When comparing 2020 to 2015, complaints increased compared to 2015 by nearly 50% or almost 9,000 complaints. And land plane complaints increased significantly, not quite 200%, but, you know, pretty close. There were also increases for seaplanes and the undefined complaints, but not quite to the same degree. One other thing to note is that in previous years, the air noise report system had been the primary source of complaints. Most people submitted complaints through that mechanism. But this year, plane noise was also, plane noise and air noise report, people submitted complaints largely equally through those two mechanisms. So this is a graphic of the complaints by aircraft type over the past years from 2015 through 2020. And largely, as you can see, we saw a significant decrease, nearly 20,000 complaints decrease since 2020, sorry, 2019. But in terms of percentage, land plane complaints doubled. In 2019, there are about 12,000 complaints for land planes versus nearly 14 in 2020. So you can see there is a, you know, a pretty disproportionate increase. Numerically, they're about the same number of complaints, but, you know, percentage-wise, it's significantly different. And then there's a sort of similar trend with the others. The operations in helicopter operations, we saw 4,000, approximately a 4,000 operational decrease. But, and then we saw maybe 10,000 helicopter complaints in 2020 versus 25,000 or so complaints in 2019. So there have been some interesting changes in the past year. This graphic just shows the number of households that have filed complaints over the past years. And as I had mentioned, with air noise report manual complaints and the plane noise operations, there's the ability to file a complaint by a household, and that's what these count. So this graph does not count the operations and complaints that are associated with a specific aircraft that are associated with a specific household. So this represents a subset of the complaints and operations that were seen. Well, I guess just the complaints. But so yes, this is a subset of complaints for these years. And here, the number of households complaining is down from last year and generally down over most of these years except for 2016. And for the number of complaints per household, that's also decreased. It's 66.4, which is less than the years from 2017 through 2019. And then this, I believe, is the last slide with content. And this just goes over the general top-level operations, aircraft with the most operations versus the most number of complaints. And here, we found that the S-76 helicopter received the most complaints at almost 3,000. And it had the third-most operations of any aircraft model. Similarly, the Cessna 208, the seaplane version, had the second-most complaints, about 1,500. And it performed the fourth-most operations. Interestingly, the 172 and the Piper PA-28, they had the largest number of operations and had the fourth and 12th most complaints. So there's not necessarily, you know, a direct comparison between the most number of operations and the most number of complaints, but they're reasonably close in comparison. So those are the high-level observations that we have found for 2020. And I'm happy to take questions or have people discuss as needed. Thank you.
Questions from board members at this point? Thank you very much, Sarah. I would like to go to the public and see. I know we have a number of people online waiting to comment today, so I'd like to go back to the public for comments.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, I'll unmute the next caller on hold. The last four digits are 1598. Hello, caller with the last four digits 1598. Are you there? Their line is open, hearing nothing. I can move on. The next caller, the last four digits are 2471. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, I'm Amy Turner. I live on Ridge Road, which is north of the airport, not far. And I'm one of the many in East Hampton and elsewhere, we've heard from Sag Harbor and the North Fork, that suffer from the incessant noise from the airport. I've lived here for 20 years and it's just gotten worse and worse. Not just the noise, also the fear that one of these, there's going to be an accident someday because talking about low-flying airplanes, the helicopters are often flying very low over our house. You know, it's always seemed to me that the airport, with no data to back it up, that the airport really just serves a small slice of our community and that to the detriment of really, you know, the entire town. So I was really heartened to see in the consultant's report that, you know, that economic contributions of the airport are not that great and that it does serve only a small section of our population and also is... it does serve only a small section of our population and also is a large percentage of the people served are not even from East Hampton. And, you know, very happy that it concludes that a complete closure would improve the town's quality of life and reduce pollution. And I just urge the town to consider that option. I know there'll be other opportunities to talk about that, but just wanted to make my voice heard initially. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak today and for dealing with the airport. Thanks.
Thank you for calling, Amy. Appreciate your comments. Michael, if you could go to the next caller, please?
Yes, moving on, the next caller's last four digits are 4937. I'll unmute that now.
Hello?
Morning.
Hello? Hi, this is Barry Rebeck calling.
Hey Barry.
Morning Barry.
Hi. Hi, I've been living in Wayne, in Wayne Scott for the last 25 years. And I've been living on the East End since 1957. I'd like to first thank you guys for commissioning this study, both the noise data and the economic impact. I do think that on the economic impact side, it's important to add to the plus side that new jobs will certainly be created in repurposing the airport land. And I think it's essential that we do the right thing in terms of the climate emergency. When you talk about the complaints, which in 2019 were approximately 50,600 households within a 30-mile radius of the airport, you could also note that virtually everyone has an air pollution complaint, though those aren't recorded as such. So we cannot afford to continue to subsidize our own destruction with an airport pollution machine benefiting few while harming virtually everyone. And the last thing I'd like to say is that closing the airport is not an extreme in any way. It's protecting our community, our environment now and in perpetuity. Doing that is not extreme. It is simply common sense. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate your efforts on our behalf.
Thank you for taking the time to call us, Barry, and let you, let us know your opinion. You be well.
Moving on, Mr. Supervisor, the next caller's last four digits are 2026. I'll unmute that now.
Thank you.
Hello caller with the last four digits 2026. You're live with the town board. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Liz, yes, my name is Liz Albert, and I am a new resident of Sag Harbor about a year and a half. And reading the economic impact study, I was really interested to read that East Hampton receives so little benefit from the airport and there's so much destruction. So I'm really, really hoping that you will take that into consideration in the future of the East End and, and the beautiful area that we have to protect. And you will not see the closure of the airport as necessarily so extreme, but as an opportunity to do something so wonderful for the community going forward. Thank you for your time and I'm looking forward to see, to hearing your further conversation on this.
Thanks for calling in. Appreciate it.
Moving on, the next caller, the last four digits are 0671. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Lyle Greenfield. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, Lyle. How are you?
Good. Wish I could be there. I mean, I have been vaccinated, but I can picture you. And you all look great. I don't have a, I don't have a great deal to add, except I, you know, one additional consideration is the idea that for those traveling to the East End by air, by jet or helicopter, I mean, it's not a privilege. The doors to the East End of Long Island are not shut. They're not closed to anyone. So really, it's a perk. It's a perk for those few who can afford that sort of transportation. That's one thing. Another thing is, you know, an idea that's been advanced by several people, including maybe myself, is the concept of an eco-village of affordable housing, which is in short supply in our community. And regarding the environment, you know, the, the economic impact of that, at a modest rate of, let's say there were 200 units, on somewhere between 30 and 50 of the 600-plus acres, you know, at, at a modest tax base, property tax base of $4,000 to $5,000 annually, annually, you'd be looking at additional revenue to the town of maybe a million dollars, which is not insignificant. Further to that, since the town owns the property, I'm imagining that as part of the, the cost of the, of the build of, of said units, that a modest, you know, $50,000 per plot would be considered, which would perhaps net the town $10 million. Anyway, the other, other thoughts having to do with the positive impact of the closure of the airport have already been expressed in more detail by others. So I thank you for addressing all of these issues. It's a tough one, but I think it's a brilliant opportunity for the time and for the town. And good luck to you all. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Lyle. Take care.
Okay, you too.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits of this caller is 8045. I'll unmute that now. Hello caller with the last four digits 8045. Are you there? Their line is open, hearing nothing. I can move on.
Thank you, Michael.
The next caller's last four digits are 7563. I'll unmute that now. Hello caller with the last four digits 7563. Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can you state your name?
Hello. Wonderful. Thank you. This is Teresa McCaskey from the South Old Town Aircraft Noise Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity today. And I would like to thank the town board for putting this study together. It was a huge effort. So I want to, I want to say thank you very much on behalf of the town's staff holds. This is specifically towards, my question is specifically with regards to the noise complaint. My question is, is how does HMMH obtain the noise complaint? Are they, are the noise complaints gathered by the airport manager and then forwarded to HMMH? Or are, are they like live noise complaints that are submitted on a daily basis and sent to HMMH?
Sarah, would you like to answer that?
Sure. We receive these complaints through two, two separate systems that are not necessarily associated with, with the airport. One is, as I mentioned, plane noise, and that is a system that actually the town is under contract with them. It's commercially available. And, and we contact the, the proprietor of the system when we are under, when we receive the request from the, the town to do this analysis, we ask him to provide us that data and they send it to us. The other system is, is this air noise report system. And again, it's not maintained by the town or the airport. It's maintained by, I think, a, a private individual who does this for his own edification and, and has provided it to us to, to get this information. People can subscribe to it to submit their complaints. So the short answer there is that the, the complaint reporting systems that we use are not maintained by the town nor the airport. And we reach out to the proprietors of the system at, at the time that we go under contract with the town to, to have them send us the information for the past year or so.
Okay, that's very good to hear. The reason being, because there have been some circumstances that an aircraft will be coming through the North Fork, and I have one very specific one with zip aviation, that came through, a Laurel resident submitted the noise complaint and then reached out to the airport manager to make them aware of this aggressive pilot's flight. And the response by the airport manager was that the aircraft didn't land there. When there, in fact, the airport, the aircraft did land there, based on us doing the latitude and longitude of the airport, the latitude and the longitude of the flight path of the aircraft, and the timeframe that the aircraft apparently was on the ground. The airport manager did respond then back to the Laurel resident that was distressed and then corrected himself. So I think if, if residents are taking the time to reach out to the airport manager to say that a situation has happened, that they've, they've been flown over, and the aircraft did land at the airport, to please thoroughly review that information. And secondly, there's other situations that the aircraft has come over the North Fork, has gotten close to the airport, but due to the fog and the density of, of, say, you know, something coming in off the ocean, had to then go turn around and get diverted to Gobreski. My concern is that's a legitimate noise complaint. Maybe the aircraft could not physically touch ground, but the aircraft was en route to HCO, but due to the weather condition, had to get diverted to usually its Gobreski. So I just wanted to point that out. And again, I, I thank you for your effort and appreciate your time to be able to comment on this particular situation. Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time to call in, Teresa. Have a great afternoon.
You as well.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 5194. I'll unmute that now.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Tom Creel. I'm a Montauk homeowner. And I wanted to comment on the economic study and the FAA negotiations which Bill O'Connor just set forth. So I understand there are four options now, not three as in the economic report. That is leave as is, make it private, or close the airport. And the fourth one, which I learned for the first time today, is to close and reopen. The problem with the study, and Bill said that he was going to do, or you were going to do, a diversion study later, that needs to be done now. Because you cannot study the economic effect of closing the East Hampton Airport without considering what it does with another part of East Hampton, and that is Montauk. There will be diversion to the Montauk Airport, but that's a subject of study that needs to be studied. But the, the main point is that diversion study has to be done now. It's a part of what happens if you make it private. Will there be a diversion to Montauk, which is another part of East Hampton? If you close it, will it be a diversion to Montauk and that's a part of East Hampton? And if you close it and then reopen it, as you're discussing with the FAA, how long is it going to be closed? And what effect will that have on Montauk? So my bottom line is that diversion study needs to be done now, not later.
Appreciate your comments about the diversion study, Tom. We, we understand that's an important part moving forward, certainly as a consideration at the airport. And, you know, the questions you raise are good ones and we're going to continue to work toward getting those answers. Thanks for taking the time to call us.
You're welcome. Thanks for, I forgot to thank the board for taking the time to do this deliberative study. And I appreciate Jeff Bragman saying that it is going to be deliberative. Thanks to you all.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on, the next caller's last four numbers are 4311. I'll unmute them now.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hey, this is Tom McNiven calling in. Hi to everybody and thanks so much for having this.
Thanks for calling in, Tom.
I just wanted to go back a few years. I arrived here full-time in the early 80s, right about the time the halt, the highway movement was actually successfully completing the, the ending of sunrise in Southampton. I would be living right around exit three if that had come through. And my buddy Lyle Greenfield would probably be at exit one. So that, when that happened, the naysayers said that, okay, that's the end of the Hamptons. We're done. Nobody's going to come here anymore. After that, I went into real estate and I went through three upzonings. And the opposition to the upzonings, which I thought were great, were that, okay, that's it. Nobody's going to be able to come here anymore. I think you're going to hear the same thing from the aviation industry. They've had their share of studies, and I use the term very loosely. And you're going to hear that in the future. But I think we all know that that indeed is not the case. And any economic damage, so to speak, will be picked up in other ways and will continue to be the destination that we are. I appreciate again the fact that the study's being done. I know we have a lot of work to do. And I totally agree with the gentleman, gentleman from Montauk, that the diversion study should have been done already. But that is very, very important. And like the economic study, I think it'll shed some interesting light on things. But thank you very much, you guys.
Thanks for calling in, Tom. And I'll just mention that, you know, the town board actually did a diversion study prior to imposing those curfews and those previous restrictions of the airport. Obviously, you know, diversion has to be considered in light of whatever planned possible options there are with the airport, because each will affect diversion differently, potential for diversion differently. So we understand the importance of.
Yes, I sent you all an email earlier this morning. And as a former chairman of the Open Space Advisor Committee, strongly suggest that you bond to buy with the county and state if possible. I spent time in my air and trailer out there on the beach, and it's one of the most special spots I've ever want to visit. And considering the year that we, observation wise, I would hope both that and the Wayne Scott pit could be purchased and repurposed to really benefit the community.
Thanks again for your comments, Tom. You well.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 5337. I'll unmute that caller now. Hello caller with the last four digits 5337. Are you there? Their line is open, hearing nothing. I'll move on. The next, the next caller's last four digits are 9015. I'll unmute that now.
My name is Michael Hanson. I live in Wayne Scott, due south of the airport. Is this the airport complaint line?
Yes, it is today.
I, I appreciate all of the work put into the noise complaint presentation. For the record, I have stopped making noise complaints about the airport. Because really, how many times can you complain? I have become inured to the noise and shaking of my house from low-flying helicopters. For example, just the other night, in the rain, a large helicopter flew low- flew low over my house. Go with the Skorksky VH92. And it's not just loud, it literally shakes the walls of my house. Like, the pictures move like I'm haunted by a poltergeist. And, you know, truthfully, when it comes to airport noise, I think I have it good compared to others near and far from the airport, like Southold, for example. But I appreciate this day of the dedication, the work session by the town board. I think it's very important that we all get our thoughts out there. I have one question to the previous presentation. Can the airport be a private airport and still be owned by the town of East Hampton? You know, after the grant assurances expire, after closing and opening, I recall someone saying that it could not be a private airport and be owned by the town.
I will defer to our outside airport counsel, William O'Connor, for an answer on that question. Bill, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here, Peter. Thanks. It may just be an issue of terminology. I mentioned private use, which is a little different than a private airport. There is precedent and recognition by the FAA for private use airports owned by public entities. They are few and far between, but they do exist. And so it would be different than a private party owning the airport. And of course, all of this would be subject to further discussion and understanding with the FAA.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the town board. I look forward to the rest of the work session. Have a good day.
Thanks for calling, Michael.
Moving on, the next caller's last four numbers are 1728. I'll unmute that now.
Caller's last four numbers are 1728. I'll unmute that now.
Excuse me, caller, if you're there.
Yes, good afternoon. It's Patricia Curry. Say no to KHDO.
Hi, Patricia.
Oh, great. Thank you for taking my call, and thank you for arranging this presentation today. I just wanted to say that in reviewing the HMMH analysis, what it does not capture is the real human suffering of the statistics. And there is a considerable amount of suffering and torment from operations at East Hampton Airport. To do an analysis of operations over each of the approach and departure routes would be what is required, just to see how damaging the operations are. Although residents under every single route are impacted, there is a disproportionate amount of traffic over some routes than over others. And the closer residents are living to the airport, the lower the altitude, the greater the torment. Statistics do not indicate any of that. Obviously, when there's human suffering, there's also wildlife, talking about birds and other creatures that flee at the approach of, say, a huge Skorksky, like the one that Ira Rennet flies at low altitudes very frequently, sometimes multiple times per day, over some of the wildlife refuges, as well as over our homes. That's one point. The other point is, I think it's absolutely unreasonable to expect residents to file complaints year after year, when the only thing we see happening is that traffic is increasing. And complaint fatigue, as Mr. Greenfield said, is very, very real. So when these numbers are reviewed, consider that the real impact of these complaints is far larger than what appears. People have been filing complaints, as far as I know, for 10 years. I myself have filed fewer in recent years, because I realize nothing is happening. That's one other thing I wanted to mention, and that is the question of diversion. People in five towns in our East End community are impacted by the operations from East Hampton Airport. And there's been no study of the impact of diversions of all the aircraft from East Hampton flying over other towns. That's part of what I mentioned earlier, the route problem. But it is a serious problem. Towns west and north of East Hampton Airport have been very badly impacted by what residents see as diversions on approaches and departures that could take place either over the water or within the town of East Hampton, perhaps around Montauk Point, for example. Why are they all sent north and west, many of them? These are issues that are brought up by say no supporters on a daily basis, I can tell you. And the anger is, at this point, simply growing as the traffic increases. People in other towns are hugely impacted even by the new assaults from jet aircraft, large jet aircraft. I mean, a Falcon 7X and Bombardier and so on. These are very large planes. And how many people are they bringing into the town? One, two, a dog, and a nanny? I have visited East Hampton Airport on many occasions and seen huge planes, such as a Bombardier, where two or three people will get off the flight. That's outrageous from an environmental point of view. Other than that, that's all I wanted to mention today, and I thank you for this opportunity and the others that you have afforded people residing elsewhere than in the town of East Hampton to give our input. And I wish you a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Take care.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are 644, excuse me, 6448. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Kathy Cunningham calling. Can you hear me?
Yes, Kathy. Good afternoon.
Great, thanks. Hi, Peter. I'm calling today as a private individual and not in any of my official capacities. I just, and as a student of this problem for several decades, I wanted to offer my great gratitude to the town board for pursuing this economic feasibility study. I think this has been the missing piece for so long in the discussion about the airport, and I'm, you know, encouraged by it. I wanted to add my voice to a couple of things and then offer another couple of comments. I too am very interested in the legal option of closing and reopening the airport, as Bill O'Connor mentioned earlier. I'd like to hear more about that when the time is appropriate. But, and I do agree that the Montauk diversion study, or the diversion study especially affecting Montauk needs to be part of this assessment. Although it needs to be pointed out that the Montauk Airport is a private entity. It's, this is the difference here, is that the town of East Hampton owns this airport, and private individuals own the Montauk Airport. So as much as that diversion study is important, I don't know what can be done to mitigate any of those problems, given that it's privately owned. I did want to underscore what was brought up by a caller a couple, three ahead of me, with complaint fatigue. It's a real phenomenon, and I wish that HMMH would find some way to make an assessment there. I know it's hard, you can't put a number on something that doesn't exist, but people do just get weary of complaining about something that there seems to be no immediate redress for. And it takes a person of conviction and with an understanding that the future may hold a better outcome to maintain this complaint posture. And there are really two assaults, in my view, on that. The first is that you hear the noise, you're disturbed by the noise, and then you have to go to trouble to make the complaint. So it's a very tenacious person that is able to do that, and people do throw up their hands after a while. And I would offer that I don't think that the lack of a noise complaint indicates the lack of a noise event. We all know, and most of us were raised to live and let live, you know, your neighbor's having a noisy party, or their dog is carrying on, you just kind of wait for that to stop. It's not in our nature to pick up the phone and complain about every single thing. So I think the, you know, the statistics should at least indicate that there are, the fact that no one has complained about a particular flight doesn't mean that it wasn't a noise event for people. It may be in a variety of reasons. They couldn't get to the computer or phone in time, or something else preventing them, prevented them from logging that. And I look forward to the day when noise complaints are not a necessary data point for policymaking regarding the airport. It's also been my experience that some smaller planes, and I've had this happen more frequently in the last couple, three years, that there are planes flying over me, or even jets and helicopters on occasion, that don't fit, from what I can see from where I'm sitting, the low-altitude criteria, where if they're below 200 feet, their transponders do not, you know, their transponders aren't picked up by the airport, and therefore, they're not identified. I think that there are a number of aircraft that do come in that their transponders are off, or some of these smaller planes I know don't have them. So that may account for, one of the observations HMMH made about smaller planes and the numbers of operations versus complaints for some of those aircraft. I wonder if those aircraft are all fitted with transponders, and it's clear to me just from observing them sometimes on the, you know, the maps that indicate their flight altitude and so on, that they just disappear from time to time. So I did, again, I think that this is all really important work. If the town board were to close the airport with the intent to reopen, I would recommend to do it over the summer season, so we can all see what that's like. And also, it would give you a better feel for the economic impacts of that, rather than closing in the off-season. And, you know, from that, much could be ascertained about the economic contributions, and also, you know, what further steps might be warranted. I would dare say that if people had a summer off from aircraft noise, it might change the opinion of a lot of folks about whether or not to keep the airport open or not. Anyway, thank you so much. I know this is a very hard job. The airport has been a point of controversy for decades, and I know it's not easy to do this, and I want to thank you all for all your work and goodwill to help us all manage this, residents and pilots alike. Thanks.
Thanks for calling in, Kathy. We're happy to hear from the public on what is a very important topic to many people. At this point, we are nearly hour and a half into the meeting, and I would like to move on with the next presentation. We will come back to the public to take comments after the next presentation. I appreciate everyone's patience. As I said, I know this is a very important topic to many. So with that, I'd like to introduce Shuprathim Baumik, and we also have Kevin Kline from HRNA. Welcome, gentlemen. They will be presenting the draft economic analysis.
Great. Good afternoon. Can you guys, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Shuprathim. Thanks for joining us.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Great. So again, my name is Shuprathim Baumik. I'm a partner at HRNA Advisors. Kevin, if you can just move to the next slide really quickly. And we wanted to share some of our key findings from the economic study we did on the impacts of, you know, various different options for the ongoing operations at the airport. Before we do that, just a little quick introduction. HRNA is an economic development and a consulting firm. We have been in business for more than 40 years, and both Kevin and I work out of the New York office. And again, as I said, I'm the partner in charge of this engagement, and Kevin is a senior analyst who is going to speak momentarily, and Kevin has done most of the analytical work that he will take you through. Next slide, Kevin. Just really quickly to familiarize yourselves with who we are, I think a couple of points to sort of, for you to sort of keep in mind. One is, we do a lot of work in Long Island, in both Nassau and Suffolk are very, very familiar with sort of the economic and the demographic conditions in the towns and counties in Long Island. Off note, just last year, with the onset of the pandemic, we did a study for both the counties on the COVID impacts, COVID economic impacts. We also have a very specific expertise in doing economic impact studies. And in particular, we have done them both in Long Island, looking at, for example, the impacts of the third track on the main line for the LIRR on a regional basis, as well as looking, doing economic impacts for very specific transportation-type projects, such as the expansion of LAX, the closure of Santa Monica Airport, and so on and so forth. So that's sort of a quick introduction about sort of HRNA, the firm, and our practice. I'll spend the next few slides just kind of setting this up before handing it over to Kevin. So Kevin, if you could go to the next slide. And I know Bill has set this up really well, but, you know, we were sort of looking at sort of, you know, three different options of what the airport potentially might look like in the future. One is sort of the existing airport operations, for which, as Kevin will describe, we looked at sort of 2019 sort of data to understand what those economic impacts might look like. We then looked at the other end of the scale to a scenario, which you are calling the alternative passive use scenario, which is about if the airport was, were to close completely and not be used as an airport and turned over to sort of, you know, a passive scenario with hiking trails and parks and open space, what would the impacts look like under that scenario? And then in the middle, you know, we constructed a, as an option, a modified airport scenario with no commercial operations to understand what those impacts are going to be, which is what, you know, we are, Kevin is going to describe to you as we go through this presentation. So just to kind of familiarize myself, and I know all of you, by this time, probably know some of the facts very much. You know, it's 610 acres of land, 11,000 arriving passenger operations in 2019. Nearly two-thirds of those passenger operations happen during the summer season. 60%, three-fifths of HTO passengers stay in East Hampton. And from data that we have compiled from various sources, you know, we estimate that less than 1% of the 1.7 million visitors to East Hampton actually use the airport for transportation purposes. Just to step back, you know, the airport, as you may all know, is completely self-funded. The annual budget, the 2020 budget for the airport is 6 million, and that is essentially sort of a recoup from revenues in terms of landing fees and aviation fuel and things of that sort. Just to step back, and this is some important context, as we think about, think about the impacts on the airport, and put it in the context of the overall sort of economy of the town of East Hampton. The tourism employment in the town of East Hampton is about 25%, about 1 in 4 jobs are tourism-oriented, tourism-oriented jobs. The town as a whole has about 12,000 jobs, so about 3,000 of those jobs are in tourism-type industries. Over half of the housing units are for seasonal use. Nearly 50% of the taxable sales in East Hampton come from tourists and second home owners. And the town, like other towns in Long Island, a little over 50% of the town's operating revenues are from property taxes, so something for you to sort of keep in mind as benchmarks over here, as we sort of get into the specifics about what the economic impacts are for each of these scenarios. And as we talk about the economic impacts and sort of present them in terms of the absolute number of jobs, we will also sort of, you know, put them in the context of what is it as a percentage of total jobs, or what is it as a percentage of tourism jobs in the East Hampton economy. So just to quickly sort of describe the three scenarios. So for the existing conditions, which is, you know, the typical sort of pre-COVID 2019 operations, as well as the modified operations, which we are describing as the elimination of all commercial flights, what we did was, we used an econometric model called IMPLANT, which is sort of, you know, nationally recognized. It was customized for just the town of East Hampton, so all the economic impacts that we are describing, described are for the town of East Hampton only. So for those two initial scenarios, existing conditions, modified operations, we actually went ahead and used this econometric model, IMPLANT, to evaluate the economic impacts. For, to evaluate the economic impact of the passive use, which assumes that all airport operations are closed, both commercial and non-commercial, and the 600 acres essentially repurposed as passive open space, again, you know, parks, trails, things of that sort. HRNA did a more qualitative analysis to understand, you know, what are the potential sort of, you know, benefits that might come to both East Hampton residents and visitors from the passive use. And to do this qualitative analysis, we did a pretty extensive literature review to understand from precedent cases what some of those qualitative benefits might look like. So at this point in time, I'm going to hand this over to Kevin Kline to take you all through the actual benefits of each of these three scenarios one by one.
Thanks, Shuprathim. So starting off with the existing condition scenario, for this, we are assuming typical pre-COVID, and that means 2019 operations, some good data from 2019. And for that, we needed some, to gather some inputs for our model. So for that, we looked at both airport operations, which we would consider spending by the airport, as well as spending by passengers who use the airport, to come up with our sort of total East Hampton Airport economic impact figure. For airport operations, we were, we looked at the town budget to look, to look at how that $6.3 million was spent in 2019, and sort of distributed that among the day-to-day functions of the airport, labor costs, professional services, fuel. For the passenger spending case of this, we looked at the activity created by visitors who travel to the town via the airport, and those are both passengers arriving via both commercial and non-commercial aircrafts. We'll get into a little bit more on how that spending is sort of distributed among the town. And with those two inputs, we use our economic impact models to sort of, to come up with the total figure for the impact of East Hampton Airport. What we do know, however, is that not all of the passengers who use East Hampton Airport end up ultimately traveling to the town of East Hampton. We worked with the transportation firm, Inrix, to do an analysis of anonymized geolocated cell phone data, to sort of look at where passengers who fly into East Hampton Airport, where do they ultimately go? And using that, we sort of aggregated this data to points of interest and found that about only 60% of East Hampton Airport passengers then proceed into the town of East Hampton. So if we're looking at our annual 24,000 arriving passengers figure, we would discount that by about 10,000 passengers who we know are traveling to either Southampton or other points west, bringing us to a total of 14,000, total East Hampton-bound arriving passengers in 2019. We also know that airport passengers are likely to spend more per trip than other visitors. We come up with an estimate of around $500 to $1,300 per visitor, per visit. And then you'll see, based on data from the RKG associate study of East Hampton Hamlet Business and Street Town Plan, we can see that that data, that spending is distributed among five major categories: residential maintenance, recreation and entertainment, general retail accommodations, and the bulk spent on food and beverages. And using those figures and extrapolating to all airport visitors, we estimate that East Hampton Airport visitors' estimated spending represents about only 1% to 3% of the town's total taxable sales. That's, I think, $7 to $20 million. And combine that with the airport operations figure earlier, that was, I mentioned, the fuel, the professional services, the labor costs, to use those as inputs into our model, and found that I think only around, I think, what is it, 100 to 230 jobs are supported by the East Hampton Airport, as well as $13 million to $26 million in local spending. That 100 to 230 jobs accounts for about 1% to 2% of all of East Hampton employment, or I think 8% of tourism employment. Moving on to the modified operation scenario, this was assuming the elimination of all commercial flights. So just defining that a little bit quickly for you here, commercial flights would consist of aircraft for hire to transport passengers. Those are scheduled flights, chartered flights, or commuter helicopters, while non-commercial aircraft are mostly small personal aircrafts. For this, we've discounted any aircrafts that might be used for instructional or practice flights, and those are aircraft that are both taking off and landing from East Hampton A majority of passengers, about 3/4, fly into East Hampton via commercial aircraft, leaving only around 6,000 arriving non-commercial passengers in 2019. If we're applying the sort of same discount for passengers who don't continue on to the town of East Hampton, those who travel to Southampton or other points west, that leaves us with around 4,000 East Hampton-bound non-commercial passengers, and applying our sort of same visitor spending distribution methodology from earlier, that's about $2 to $5 million in non-commercial passenger spending. We also know from a study that we conducted in 2019, we did a ground survey of passengers, asking a variety of questions about where these passengers are going, how they would change their behaviors if the airport were closed, and around 48% of those passengers suggested that if the airport were closed, they would continue to visit their destinations via another mode of transportation, like car or rail. So knowing that if the airport were closed, around 48% of visitors would continue to visit East Hampton, we were able to add back in those visits to come up with the total potential spending loss for travelers that will not come back, being around $3 to $7 million. Combining that with the airport operations figure and passenger spending effects, this comes out to around 65 to 150 jobs supported by the modified scenario, as well as $10 million to $18 million in local spending. Moving on to the passive use scenario, as Shuprathim suggested earlier, this was a more qualitative analysis, sort of of different benefits of parks and open space. We analyzed both the economic benefits, community benefits, and environmental impacts, knowing that parks have, that parks and open space have impacts on property value spending, community benefits such as reduction of noise, quality of life improvements, physical health, as well as environmental benefits, like water quality and stormwater management, reduction of pollution, and so on. So different parks and open space resources have a variety of benefits, as I mentioned earlier, including real estate values. Different parks have different values depending on the typology of park. Not all parks are the same. You can have more of like a woodland park, a major destination park like Central Park, things that are either really activated with events and programming, or one that's just mainly trails. We've sort of outlined the variety of benefits of those different types of parks here. You can see that a lot of neighborhood parks have both real estate and environmental benefits, while parks with unique assets like events or programming are bringing a lot of tourism and local spending. We know from a literature review that major parks create a real estate premium for properties around the park. We looked at Central Park, which we know famously doubled property values around the park within 15 years. Condo resale prices along the Toronto waterfront resulted in a 5% premium over an eight-year period. Trail networks, such as Greenways Bicycle Trails, also have been observed to have real estate benefits. The Caddie Trail in Dallas, Texas increased property values around 25% within seven years. Austin, Texas, a 12% premium in home value increases along the Barton Creek Greenbelt within two years. And even natural areas, those that aren't truly improved, still have benefits to local residents, to local real estate values. A study in Portland, Oregon, found that homes within 1,500 feet of a natural area park raised the home value by around 1%. Airport also creates environmental and quality of life impacts. As we know, from noise pollution to groundwater contamination, there've been many noise complaints against the airport for disrupting the quiet and rural environment. We know that East Hampton's unique attributes may get vulnerable to effects of pollution from airport-related water contamination, and we know that ground pollution from East Hampton Airport has affected nearby drinking water, resulting in contamination. We put this all together in a sort of table here to organize the different outputs. You can see them stacked up against each other. I'll leave this up for a little bit to let anyone take a look. But I think, moving on from this, we have some high-level takeaways next, and we can move on to questions. So for key takeaways, the current airport operations and passenger spending generates around $13 million to $26 million in economic output, and around 100 to 230 full-time jobs. As I mentioned earlier, that's around 1% to 2% of the town's taxable sales. The employment at the airport, the employment impact of the airport is around 100 to 230 jobs. That's 1% to 2% of all East Hampton employment. The net employment impact of the modified scenario, that's subtracting the commercial aircrafts, is around 0.5% to 1.3% of all East Hampton employment, and 2% to 5% of tourism employment, as well as noting that complete closure of East Hampton Airport will result in benefits that improve the town resident's quality of life, reduce noise, ground and water pollution, and some of these benefits may have positive impacts on nearby property So I think we can really move on to questions.
Yeah, thank you very much, Kevin. Do board members have any questions at this time or comments?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Yeah.
Kevin, can we stop sharing? Sorry.
Yeah.
And Michael, we'll go to the callers on the line, please, now, for comments.
Sure, sure, okay. The next caller on hold, the last four of their phone are 7877. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Craig Van Sickle. Can you hear me?
Yes, Craig. Good afternoon.
Hi, Peter. Hi, everybody. Thanks for doing this. This is super important. Thanks for the opportunity to call in. I just wanted to sort of put a little bit of energy sustainability perspective of being on the Energy Sustainability Committee, and just looking at the pros and cons in a more overview way. You know, obviously, the noise and torturing the citizens, the limited economic benefits, this is on the con side, depressing real estate values. Then you get to pollution. It can't be healthy to be underneath all of that jet fuel. And, you know, here we are with these goals. You know, it actually points out that, you know, the relevance of perhaps updating our town goals from just consuming renewable energy, if what we really want, which I think is what everybody really wants, is to go to a net carbon emissions state. You know, the source, the biggest source in the town, I, sadly, you know, not knowing study-wise, of carbon emissions has got to be the airport, given the volume of what's used there. So, you know, so that's, that's a really, would seem to be, given our emergency, climate emergency declaration that we recently did, you know, the first, the first biggest target that we could do to achieve, you know, carbon emission reductions. You know, the idea that it serves less than 1% of the population is pretty amazing. And, you know, harms water quality. But then I would also like to emphasize on the other side, that obviously, we love parks and open space, less, you know, less than nobody, but there's such an opportunity to integrate a whole lot of beneficial things on that land, given that it's such an amazing piece of property, including, obviously, you know, in an integrated way, so that this is not just, you know, fragmented, somebody with a smart development background could weave together affordable housing, renewable energy, microgrids, restoration of habitats, including soil regeneration, carbon capture, preparing for local self-reliance, both in energy and food as climate conditions change. I would suggest that, you know, there's opportunities in places like that to use higher-density zoning. Sprawl at this point in the town, from my standpoint, is really irresponsible. You know, I would try to limit it to the greatest extent possible, just to affordable housing, since that's only added population density that I think the town can manage without continuing to exceed its carrying capacity. And, you know, obviously, that could include water treatment plants. And, you know, it seems like such a no-brainer to do a dramatic transition from what the current use is to something that's still so much better. And I really appreciate your being so thoughtful in contemplating all of this, and for giving me the opportunity to comment.
Well, thanks for taking the opportunity, Craig. We appreciate your comments. Have a good afternoon.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 3691. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Lena Tabori, Peter. I bought a home here close to 50 years ago, and I founded a climate change resources website four years ago. I've been a member of the town's Energy Sustainability Committee for two years, and I consider East Hampton a paradise, and I consider the East Hampton Town Board to be extraordinary caretakers of this paradise. The fact that you didn't have the right to decide about this airport until this coming September is the only answer I can find for why you haven't taken action earlier. This is a paradise that is required, but is facing some existential climate change challenges. I am not here to dismiss the gravity of noise, or the house shaking mentioned by Michael Hansen, but the effect of the airport on water quality, air quality, and the increase of greenhouse gas emissions, this is equally, if not more critical. As Craig mentioned just earlier, I certainly hope the airport is permanently closed. Outside of medical emergencies, it seems to function only as a convenience for a very small percentage of our population, and massively more than an annoyance to the rest. I hope, or probably I know, that we have many diverse ideas about what can arise on this space when the airport vanishes, and I will only say that I hope we use these 600 acres in an environmentally thoughtful way, while reducing rather than increasing emissions. I'm certain that those that come by air will then come by jitney, by train, or by car, all of which, by that time, will probably have been electrified, and hopefully even fueled by renewables. I deeply appreciate the board for having taken all of this so seriously, and I just want to remind everyone that the end of September is the first time that the town has the right to decide about this. In the meantime, gratitude for your careful consideration, and thank you, Peter, for your leadership.
Thank you very much, Lena. Thanks for calling in this afternoon. Be well.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 6652. I'll unmute that now.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the town board's attention to this. My name is... My name is Bob O'Gaye. I'm a resident along further lanes east of the airport. Our principal issue is with jets rather than with helicopters, essentially any inbound jet. They're on final approach by the time they get to us, and they are complaint, source of a complaint for us. We are among those who have underlogged complaints for a variety of reasons, including some problems with the technology. But Sunday and weekend afternoons in particular, where we are, there is a constant stream of inbound jets, up to as many as two dozen or more, coming in in a relatively short space of time, and very disruptive to our family's peace and quiet on a peaceful, gorgeous summer afternoon. I've been around for a while. I'm in my, approaching my ninth decade. We've been, as I say, not only in life, but as a summer visitor to East Hampton. I've been a summer resident since the early 70s. And one of the great things throughout that period was the sounds of East Hampton, not only the visual impact, visual stuff that we all enjoy, but the sounds you heard with the ocean, the trees and the birds, the sounds of man were relatively in the background. The lawnmowers were less noisy, there were no leaf blowers. And the airport had single and occasionally twin-engine aircraft. I've used the airport myself on emergency situations, and trying not pose necessarily closing it if its impact is or usage is limited to single and twin-engine, piston-powered airplanes. But the whole level of noise here has, as we all know, gotten really kind of out of hand and very discordant with the rest of what East Hampton has to, has to offer. As I say, we are under counters and complainers. I just like to add two thoughts to this. One of them is that we've kind of got into this situation because we tied our hands with the FAA, and whatever action the town board takes, I would encourage it to make sure that it has complete flexibility as to decision-making going forward. If we hadn't had these grant assurances, the board could have tight-traded its usage and put in restrictions over time as to usage hours, types of aircraft, and so forth. Now we've got into a situation where we really couldn't do much, and all of a sudden it's become a huge problem. Sort of meaning number one would be maintain time control at all costs, and if the price of doing that is closing it completely free here, I would favor that. The other thing is, a very pithy statement from Milton Friedman, a well-known economist, he said, "Parsley's untaxed income." It sounds like we have an economic report here that recognizes that directly. But there's a cost to everyone, certainly to me and my family, for having that disruption that I spoke of earlier, even if it's not reflected in a straightforward conventional economic analysis. And I think that should be part of the consideration of the board's deliberation. And again, I really thank the board and appreciate the seriousness and intention and professionalism that is going into this. Thank you.
Bob, thanks so much for your very articulate comments. We appreciate hearing from you, and be well.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 9067. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Lou Cortez from Montauk. I just want to make a quick comment, and then I have two questions. With regard to the reasons that you need to consider as to what to do with the airport, I think the noise problem is one that no longer needs to be questioned or studied. We all know that it's intolerable, and it's not something that people should be made to withstand. And the people of Montauk are so afraid of it that they're clamoring for not to have the airport closed because they're afraid that the flights are going to be diverted to the Montauk Airport. So I think you have a split-the-baby Solomon dilemma that you're confronted with, because if you choose to, if you choose to adhere to the demands of the people who live near the airport by closing the airport and those flights get diverted to Montauk, you still have the same problem. So I don't envy you the decision that you face. The questions I have, it's just two quick questions. I might have missed this on the economic impact study, but it seems, or that the figures that are presented in that study show that there are $6 million that are allocated to expenses for the airport and only $5 million in revenue. And I was always under the impression that the airport was self-sustaining and the revenues exceeded the expenses. So that's one question. The other question has to do with Bill O'Connor's presentation, and this is what I might have missed, so pardon me if you have to repeat it, but I'm not sure I understand why, what is the reason or what's the difference that it makes by closing the airport and then reopening it? How would that give the town more flexibility to control the number of flights and the operations over just keeping it open and taking control once the grant assurances have expired? So those are my two questions.
So the answer to your first question, Lou, is that the airport is self-sustaining. That was, you know, a question that had been raised in the past, and that was the reason for previous administrations seeking grants, grant funding, was that they claimed that the airport wouldn't be able to operate on its own. It currently has for some time. There's, I believe, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, we're about a $7 million surplus in the airport fund. So it's more than self-sustaining. It has significant reserve as a result of its operations. And I will defer to outside counsel, Bill O'Connor, to comment on the private use airport, closing the airport and reopening it as private use, and how that would allow for the town to have some say about how it's operated.
Thank you, Peter. That approach, based on an interpretation of the ANCA statute, would mean that ANCA wouldn't apply if you reopen the airport, because what you're doing essentially is you're allowing access, you're not restricting access in that situation. There's no question that you have the ability to close the airport. There's no question that you can consider modifying how the airport operates, you can consider physical changes, and then you can make a decision essentially to create a new airport that is allowing access, not restricting access. In that scenario, ANCA does not apply.
Just, Peter, with regard to the sustainability, self-sustainability of the airport, I'm looking at the economic impact study, and it's got two graphs. On one side, you have the operating revenues for the town of East Hampton, and on the other side, you have the budgeted expenditures. Unless I'm not reading this right, or I don't understand it correctly, the budgeted expenditures in the pie chart show airports $6 million. And on the revenue pie chart, it shows sale of aviation fuel, $3 million, airport landing fees, $2 million, for a total of $5 million. So what am I missing? It's according, the way I read this, it shows $5 million revenue, $6 million expenditures. What am I not seeing correctly?
Kevin, do you have a response for that?
Sure. I mean, this is just one particular year of the airport's budget and expenditures. As you were mentioning earlier, there are significant reserves in the airport fund. So while this particular year, it might not have hit $6 million exactly, that does not mean that it's not funding itself. It can receive money from that fund from past years. It fluctuates year to year, but I think in general, it is, those are pretty even.
I think what's driving the expenditure is the purchase of the fuel. And then we tack on a 30-cent fuel flowage fee, and then we resell it. So maybe Jim's the better person to answer Lou's question.
Thank you, Kathy. You're right about that, the skewed report on fuel. But the other thing the report doesn't take into consideration is the lease revenue that the airport gets from the hangars and the industrial park. That's a much more significant revenue figure than the report shows.
So those items should be considered in revisiting that revenue line and expenditure chart, Kevin. If you can make note of that, please. All right. Thank you very much. Lou, thanks for calling in. Appreciate it.
Moving on, Mr. Supervisor, if I could just make a statement, we do have a lot of people on hold, and if there's anyone on hold that has spoken, some people have stuck around to listen. It might make the phone lines more available for those who are trying to call in, if they wouldn't mind hanging up and listening to it on our broadcast. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Michael. We appreciate everybody's patience and cooperation. I know this is a topic that's drawn quite a bit of interest from the public, and we want to try to get through and listen to everyone's comments today.
Thank you. Moving forward, the next caller, the last four digits are 2730. I'll unmute that now. Caller with the last four digits, 2730, are you there? The line is open, hearing nothing, I'll move on. The next caller I see is, last four digits are 8045. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Martin Diner. I live on Ground Zero, 22 Deerwood Path, where there are part of the November route where all the helicopters pretty much come over. A couple of things I wanted to point out, some of which have been, points that have been made already, 2020 really is an aberration. The numbers are down, obviously, because of the COVID situation, but the reality is we're on the verge of blooming chaos at this point in time. There are many new operators, flying helicopters, that I, you know, companies that I've never seen before. I do believe, based on a Blade presentation that I observed, that they are subcontracting to Blade, and the quantity is just morphing over and over. Given that a picture is worth 10,000 complaints, I forwarded three screenshots of what was going on on May 7th to Jeanne Hudson. She has those in an email from me. I think it would be beneficial for the board to take a look at what it looks like over Southampton Town, specifically over North Sea and Noack. It's unbelievable, they are lined up nose to tail, five, six helicopters in a row. Another comment I wanted to make is that Eastern Regional has designated this path of, this November path over Noack as a non-noise-sensitive area, which is, it's a joke, but nonetheless, they've concentrated the flights over a certain geographic region. Consequently, you're going to get funneled complaints over that region. I suspect that was not by accident, but by design, the philosophy being disturb a few a lot instead of many a little, and you'll get less complaints, and then eventually complaint fatigue, and, you know, the numbers won't be so high. One other thing is that I think the decision to not use the data from air noise report from the mapping section is really problematic, because I would guesstimate, you know, that 80% or 90% of people use that portion of it and only make manual complaints when it doesn't, the aircraft doesn't show up on the map. And those are a little bit harder to do, so people are less likely to do them. What I think should happen in future reports is that perhaps as an addendum or an asterisk, someone might say, these are the numbers from the mapped complaints, where we can't identify who or the address of the complainer-maker, but these are the numbers. We're not counting them, but these are the additional complaints, because I think that's relevant and not minimal. There's a lot of numbers that are getting tossed out there. And as far as complaint fatigue goes, I'm probably the darkest spot on the circle, and I've been pointed out in meetings before, because I'm a high-level complainer, and I do those complaints because I feel not completely powerless. And by being able to lodge a complaint, I feel like I'm trying to do something to protect myself and to protect my family, and I haven't given up. So that's all I want to say, and I want to thank you very much for your time and efforts.
Thank you for calling in, Martin. Appreciate your comments.
You're quite welcome.
Moving on to the next caller, the last four digits are 2187. I'll unmute that now. Caller with the last four digits, 2187.
Hi, Peter. This is Officer Malman. I just want to thank you for holding us here. I am the chairman of the Airport Management Advisory Committee, which for those who don't know about it, is a committee of citizens appointed by the town, and it was set up originally with an equal number of pro-aviation people and pro-noise reduction people, with a couple of in-between. And I'm really happy to report that surprisingly, most of the recommendations that have been made over the last several years by the AMAC, as we call it, have been unanimous, as we get approval from both the anti-noise and the aviation side. I want to clear up a few things about the economics of the airport, which are not pro or con, but I just think it may help people understand what's happening out there. There's a huge number, it's called aviation fuel, and it really, it took a lot of us a while to understand how little, how little an effect it has on the economics of the airport. While it shows in the town budget, we buy about, I'm sorry, we sell about $2.5 million worth of fuel. It also shows that we buy about $2.3 million worth of fuel. And that fuel that we buy really has no economic impact on the town itself. It comes in a tanker truck from someplace around Port Newark, it's dumped the fuel. It comes in a tanker truck from someplace around Port Newark, it's dumped at the fuel farm that we have and sold to the FBOs who then sell it on to the eventual users. So that's something that always confuses people. The other thing is that the simple source of revenue for the airport is leasing revenue. We have, as many of you know, a number of parcels for lease for non-aeronautical purposes along industrial road. And over the last several years, the revenues from that source have gone up by a few hundred thousand dollars and are likely to go up significantly over time. So even if the airport was closed, those sources of revenue would still come in. There are different companies that have nothing to do with the airport. There's a landscaping company, I think there's a company that stores pods out there, there are roofers, there's LTV and so forth. So that doesn't need any rezoning to continue to generate non-aeronautical fees. There are also some lease revenues from hangars and the FBO and so forth. The other thing I want to just clarify, I expect that the number of $7 million in the reserve fund is accurate. However, it didn't come from the operations of the airport. The airport more or less breaks even and possibly has a few hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars of excess funds some years and a little bit less some other years. We have, as I mentioned, non-aeronautical leases at the airport. And a couple of the old ones had the ability of the tenant to buy the property. And in the last couple of years, there have been several million dollars of sale proceeds that have come in. Those are one-time events. There are some leases still around where the tenant has the obligation, or has the opportunity to buy the property, and that could increase the airport fund. However, the general idea is not to enter into new leases, aviation or not aviation, with new tenants with purchase options, but rather to keep that property as a long-term perpetual asset generating income for the town. The other questions really are of a legal nature and probably directed toward Bill. And they are really threefold. One, I personally find tantalizing. Your second hypothetical of closing the airport to commercial traffic, which we all pretty much understand, the Blade helicopters and charter flights. But Bill, where does something like, and I use the illustration that was given earlier, Ira Renner's privately owned, very large helicopter come in, is that, I don't think that's a commercial flight, it's owned by Renner, who I think has a non-public company, so it's not even a public company aircraft. And then there are lots of people who have their own aircraft, though not based at East Hampton. And then there is many people who have two or three owners of an aircraft that they share, and they can fly in and out. Would those be commercial or non-commercial? Or has that just something not yet drilled down on?
I can answer that if the town board would like me to.
I have no objection.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, Arthur, maybe what we can do is sort of look at it how we approached the HRNA study. What we deemed commercial flights were known charter operators, so working with Jim Brundage and his team to understand those operators that we know to be operating as a charter. That's one bucket. There are also those operations that are done under a fractional program, like you mentioned, Mr. Malman, Think Net Jets. Those were included within the bucket that we would consider commercial operations. What we did not put in the bucket is what you pointed out, which would be a privately-owned aircraft that is operated under Part 91 of the Federal Aviation Regulations as a personal Those flights were treated differently.
What about corporate jets? That would fall under?
Part 91. Those would, just under that analysis and how we categorize them for the economic analysis, that would be different than commercial.
Yeah. I've got two more questions.
Doesn't necessarily limit you in terms of how you fashion what you want this airport to be in the future, it's just how we've been looking at it so far.
Bill, my fourth one's even shorter. How long would you think the airport had to be closed to be fully comfortable reopening with a different use scenario? Is that a matter of a couple of months or a season?
What I could say at this point is it would have to be some appreciable period of time.
Okay. That's, I won't even comment, but you know, obviously, that's something we have to look at because closing it from September to May would have a different effect on things than closing it, you know, for a 12-month period. The last question I have is, has any group that you know of that has had a municipal airport been able to close it for an appreciable period of time and then reopen it the way you're suggesting with more restricted leases at the airport?
Yes, there is a comparable example with the West Maui Airport in Hawaii, and there may be one or two others that I can't, don't have at the tip of my tongue. But yes, I mean, the point is, the airport would be, for all intents and purposes, a new airport where access would be granted as opposed to restricted.
It would be not for today, obviously, but when you have a chance, it'd be nice to get some information from you on those one, two, or three other airports to see, you know, if they differ from us. But it's certainly an attractive proposition. Thank you very much.
Thanks for calling in, Arthur.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits of this caller's number are 8912. I'll undo that now.
Good afternoon. This is Jim Stone. I am calling from the North Sea area of Southampton. I'm directly under the November route, so this is certainly an area of intense importance to me. I'm calling with a comment, suggestion, and possibly question regarding the economic analysis. I listened to it when you were talking about the increases in property values for people surrounding parks. And I was remembering an Express News Group session a few, maybe a month or two ago, where a Realtor called in, said she picks up potential clients who've helicoptered in, she picks them up at the airport, and the first thing they ask to see is a house that's not in the flight path of the airport. And so what I'm wondering about is what about the negative impacts of people in the flight path and homes in the flight path and everybody else in the area? Is that something that could be incorporated into this analysis? Thank you.
Yeah, Joe, I think you bring up, you know, an important and interesting point. Kevin, I know that in the analysis, we didn't, it looked like we didn't really consider what the impact would be for closure with property values, other than to say that if it became open space and a passive use, that there are examples of an increase in property value. And I think you cited Oregon, some place in Oregon where it's about 1%. Given the value of properties here on the South Fork, it's quite likely that impact would be greater. Can you address how much time, if any, really was focused on that particular question?
Sure. We didn't look at any of the potential negative externalities of the airport for this particular study. This is still very much a preliminary study, but we have done a literature review on sort of the negative effects of airport noise on property values. And for a future study, we could do what's essentially called like a hedonic regression model, where we look at all the different factors affecting property values, including the flight paths and the decibel increase from the airport on different properties to sort of figure out what the coefficient or the amenity value of that is. We haven't done that yet, but that is definitely something that we could do.
Do the board members have an opinion on whether or not to conduct a little further investigation on that specific issue? It seems to me like it would be warranted.
I agree. I agree. It should be warranted.
I support it.
I have, yeah, I'd like to see what they could do. You know, there are, the difficulty is there are many different factors in comparing real estate. It's not just, you know, location under a flight path and non-location under a flight path. There's, you know, character of the neighborhood, the zoning, how big the houses are. So I have a feeling this might be a little trickier than it seems on the surface to get an accurate comparison. But it's worth a shot if the experts think they can do a hedonic, what is it, expression? Digression? I'm sorry, I don't.
Regression.
Regression. Regression.
Yeah, I mean, we see this all the time in valuing real estate. You have to get comparables. Obviously, when you do an appraisal on a property, you're looking at, you know, similarly sized and situated properties, the amenities that are comparable, number of bedrooms, all that sort of thing. So I'm sure there's a way to get into that, Kevin. If you feel comfortable that there is, please let us know. It sounds like the board would be very interested in pursuing that. Joe, did you have any other comments or questions?
If I'm, this is Jim again. If I'm still on, just thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you for holding this meeting.
Thanks for calling in.
Bye.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are 4772. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Tom Oden, longtime resident of Wayne Scott. First, I want to very much join all the thanks that have been given by the various callers to the efforts of the board to address this issue and especially in putting together this presentation. I have just one question or comment about the HRNA study. First, I'd mention that in addition to the 30-page summary that was gone over, there's an 80-page version that I believe is up on the town's website that has even more background detail. It's worth a look for those who are interested in it. But I do have one critique of the economic analysis, and that is that the, or certainly a linchpin of it is this survey of passenger users that supposedly shows 52% of them would no longer come out to East Hampton if the airport were closed. Now, to me, that seems ridiculously exaggerated, just as a matter of common sense. The people who come out to this airport may not be particularly considerate of their neighbors, but they're not stupid. And when they get asked questions in a survey about whether they would come out if the airport were closed, being used at the airport, they know what answer to give. So I'd ask HRNA to take that into account in some way in their subsequent versions of the economic impact analysis. Again, thanks very much to the board.
Thanks for calling in, Tom. Have a great afternoon.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are 5191. I'll unmute that now. Hello, caller with the last four digits 5191. Are you there?
I can't hear anything from the boardroom. I know. I don't know what happened, Vincent.
Hello, miss. Hello, miss. You're on the phone with the town board. Are you there?
Yes, thanks very much.
One last time, caller with the last four digits 5191. You're on the air.
Hello?
Hello, yes. Could you identify yourself? You're live with the town board.
Thank you. My name is Carol Mandell, and I am a longtime Wayne Scott resident who has, Vincent, be quiet. Who has, who has experienced the airport in its early charming days and now the difficulties we're having with it, and I'm very grateful to the town.
You're not being heard. Unmute yourself.
I'm not muted.
Excuse me, miss. You are live on the air. We can hear you just fine.
Hello? My name is Carol Mandell, and I.
Okay. Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am, can you hear me through your phone?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Just listen for one second, okay? If you could please mute the broadcast in the background. There's a delay on that. You are live with the town board now.
Yes, I'm trying to explain that delay to my, yes, I'm trying to explain that delay to my husband.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I want to thank the town board for the excellent report, and I know there's more research to do, but this is a very good approach. I have two questions about, one specific to the findings of the report and one to the discussion that has occurred. My first, my first question is about the estimate of per individual spending from people that come into the airport. I know that HRA was very careful with their estimates, but since so many of the passengers are children and family members, you know, folks who work for the family, I'm just wondering how that was taken into account because obviously, child spending is not the same as adult spending, except in some very indulgent families, I guess. So I'm wondering how that was calculated and whether child passengers were taken into account. My other question has to do with the discussion about Montauk and traffic diversion. Given that Montauk is a private airport, would they, obviously, we have, you know, all the aspects of the impact would need to be studied, but given that they are a private airport, would they not have the power to regulate that airport in a way that they would not have more traffic than they wanted or the kinds of traffic that they didn't want? So that the Montauk airport would be able to manage itself in a way that, you know, the East Hampton airport has not been able to do under FAA control? So those are my two questions. Thanks very much.
Kevin, you want to answer the first question regarding the spending associated with those who visit via air travel?
Sure. So for the spending piece of this, unfortunately, we weren't able to conduct a passenger survey this year to get better answers for the passenger spending questions. We had to sort of take a best guess approach of that. For that, we looked at the town's taxable sales for the year 2019 and then shared that down by the number of passengers we know arrive via aircraft. We know that aircraft passengers are likely to spend more than regular passengers, so we looked at both the Census Bureau's Consumer Expenditure Survey as well as an independent report on travel behaviors that estimated around that wealthy passenger spend around, I think it was three to seven times more than regular passengers. Both of the surveys, I know the Census, the Consumer Expenditure Survey is at a household level, so theoretically, that should include families that are spending and traveling. The same goes with the other survey. I think for now, that's the best that we can get to approximate that spending figure without having done an in-person survey. But that's the approach that we took for that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the other question? Anyone want to take that?
I think that the Montauk question's probably for me, Peter.
Yeah, I think so, really.
Yeah. I'll make a couple of comments about. I'll make a couple of comments about, about Montauk. First of all, the way it's configured and where it is presents some operational limitations. So you have a runway that's less than 3,500 feet. So what that means is, you know, typically, large jets cannot use that airport. Even if an operator thought that their jet was within the performance characteristics of the aircraft to land at that airport, given it has a shorter runway, they would still need to request permission from, from Montauk Airport because it operates under prior permission required for jets. The same is also true of helicopters. Helicopters have to receive prior permission from the airport if they are to, to use it. So there are, there is the ability for the private operator of Montauk Airport to regulate as they have for many, many years, those types of flights, and they have frankly, more tools than we do currently.
Thank you.
Carol, do you have any other questions or comments for us today?
Thank you for your very good answers. Thanks very much.
Thanks so much for taking the time to call us. Have a great afternoon.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are three, two, nine, zero. I'll unmute that now.
Hello, this is Tom Ogden, speaking from Montauk, New York.
Hi, Tom. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and congratulation, good afternoon and congratulations on doing a great job.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I know I say for all of Montauk, what, when we, when I say we have great empathy for the people who've been speaking and in the difficult terms they are living underneath the airport. No one, no one at all should have to live like that, and I for one, and the group I represent, Montauk United, support them in any and every way possible to solve that But closing the airport is not the answer. All you are doing, and by the way, there are, is growing data that all you're doing is transferring the problem to another geographic area of the town of East Hampton, which happens to be Montauk. Now, if that is the case, if that is the case, your, your reports that some of the reports you've been giving make no sense. Number one, you offer three alternatives, what you can do with the East Hampton Airport. And two of those, a temporary, a full closing or a temporary closing, takes no account of what would happen to Montauk if that did occur. I know you talk about a diversionary study, but in your economic report, you take no account of that also. How can you do a major economic study of the pluses or minuses and not take Montauk into account? These different era, airport companies, these airline companies who are sending are not stupid people. They're very intelligent men. If they can't go to the East Hampton Port Airport, they're going to look for another place to go. And as I said, there's growing more and more information that Montauk will be the choice. So in effect, you're not solving anything. All you're doing is creating the same type of problems you have now in terms of pollution, ecological, air quality are all headed towards Montauk. So you will be faced with this exact same problem of years down the road. I, I agree with you. I think you are doing a great job, but this diversion study should have been taken into consideration in both these two areas that I've just discussed.
But Tom, you know, I appreciate your concern, and I know this is something the town board's grappled with for a number of years, and you've been outspoken on that topic, and you're absolutely correct. We gain nothing if we simply take the problem and put it in another part of town. And I, I just want to assure you that that's not what the town board intends to do here. You know, trading one headache for another is not fixing the headache. An economic study will, I think, have to also look at all the potential options in greater depth. This is an initial discussion that we're having regarding the airport, and as we've said earlier today, we understand that further study on a number of important topics will also need to take place. Nothing's yet completed or set in stone. It was discussed earlier in the meeting that a diversion study is a necessary component that we must undertake. It's been discussed that we need to also take into account the environmental aspects of the airport as well, and all of those things do actually relate back to the economics. So, you know, this is a first blush on this particular topic, and we'll continue to take the public's comments and incorporate and refine. And I think it's really important that we have a very open and fair dialogue that's factual and based in data, and diversion is absolutely critical. We did a diversion study prior to implementing the nighttime curfews, and that would certainly need to be updated, and there are a number of other concerns that I think are appropriate to consider. So I appreciate your comments. I think you're dead on, and you're pointing out that diversion study is absolutely critical.
That's good news, and I do appreciate what you say. I'd like to comment very quickly on what your representative said about Montauk. Number one, jets, we're not worried about the jets. We're worried about the 3,800-plus helicopters coming to Montauk, which is a perfect destination if the East Hampton Airport is, is closed. And number two, your representative talks about being a private airport. That's exactly the problem. A private airport is under no, absolute no control of East Hampton or the town, or the town, any part of the town's supervision, and that is the problem rather than it being a solution. All we ask you is this, the people of Montauk want to be treated, have, should have the same respect from the town board that every single person in the town of East Hampton has. We are just as much a part of this community as every single person who now lives and suffers under that airport problem.
Tom, I think we all agree with that. We know we have a responsibility to Montauk. We know you're a part of the town, and it's, the only thing I can add is that this is an ongoing process, so your comments are helpful and we'll, you know, use them, and these studies and our information is going to evolve. Our intention today was just to start the discussion off. We wanted to put some facts on the table. They're preliminary, the reports are initial, but we wanted to get moving to just start the conversation, and as always, your comments are, you know, important and relevant, and we understand it. I agree. Montauk is, you know, I got many of the same questions I get from people on the North Fork. They say, well, are you going to just, you know, hammer us and, and, and make things quiet in East Hampton? And I've always said, we have a responsibility, a moral responsibility, to take into account impacts from our airport on neighbors outside of town and impacts on people all over town, including in the hamlet of Montauk. So we're very aware of it. This is just, just a start, just to get the wheels turning.
That, that's very well and good, but your primary responsibility is to the people of Montauk, which we are a part of.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tom. Our primary focus is the residents of town East Hampton. They're the folks that is in this position to act on their behalf, so. And I, and I appreciate you joining us today and making your comments. This is an open dialogue that we hope will continue.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, Tom. You be well. Enjoy the rest of this beautiful afternoon.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are four, four, seven, seven. I'll unmute that caller now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wanskyak and board members. My name is Alex Gerthson. I'm Director of Airports at the National Business Aviation Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate virtually from Washington, DC. Normally, I would fly in and very much enjoy spending time with you. As you know, N B A represents over 11,000 member companies and professional members who operate aircraft as part of their business or involved with business aviation. Our members include numerous tenants and users of the East Hampton Airport. The airport is unarguably one of the town's most valuable assets, and I wanted to acknowledge the serious considerations the board is undertaking in the decision process regarding its future. The aviation community is looking forward to the upcoming season. As many of you have already heard, we have greatly enhanced the voluntary noise abatement procedures and have formalized them through what we call the pilot. All of this thanks to the leadership from the East Hampton Community Alliance. One of the valuable aspects of this is the Hampton Users Group that is being created. It's a committee representing all types of aircraft users that utilize the airport, and we plan to work internally with its members to ensure cooperation with noise abatement. And then another unprecedented development in this effort, since there has been no formal noise roundtable at HGO, is now the ability for the public to participate in the monthly meetings of the Users Group and to provide constructive input on how we can make a fly neighborly program even better. So again, thank you for the time you're dedicating to the airport and for continuing to give serious consideration on how to preserve the airport in a way that it could continue to serve the community and the flying public and to provide many benefits to the town that were outlined in the earlier presentation. I wanted to assure you that N B A and its members are here to support you and the airport staff to ensure a strong, viable future for the airport and its compatibility with the surrounding communities.
Thanks for taking the time to call us today, Alex. Appreciate your comments.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are five, three, three, seven. I'll unmute that now. Hello, caller with the last four digits, five, three, three, seven. You're live with the town board. Are you there? The line is open, hearing nothing. I'll move on. The next caller, the last four digits are two, one, eight, seven. I'll unmute that now.
Hi, this is Arthur Melman again. I just learned, probably should have known it, but I learned from Bill during the conversation that Montauk has the power to limit incoming helicopter flights or jet flights, and I was wondering if there had been any consideration given to perhaps if the town of East Hampton prohibits those kinds of commercial flights into East Hampton Airport, perhaps by sort of like a conservation easement from the owner of Montauk Airport that could have him agree essentially, since it's a private airport, to, to not grant that permission that he has apparently the ability to do. This is, this is just an off-the-wall comment, but perhaps has some merit going forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. You know, all considerations are on the table, and, you know, I think that's a creative thought that you have there, and I think, you know, we need to look at every single possible way that we can improve the situation within the township regarding air traffic and air noise. As a number of callers have said, there is concern about diversion, so we will continue to keep an open mind and look at every possible avenue to solve this problem.
Moving on to the next caller. The last four digits are three, three, four, two. I'll unmute that now. Hello, caller with the last four digits, three, three, four, two. You're live with the town board.
Yes. Excuse me, I'm calling in from New York, and I'd like to make a comment on the Montauk issue.
Would you please, like, state your name for us?
My name is Gene Polito, P O L I T O.
Hello, Gene.
Sir, if you don't mind, if you could mute the broadcast behind you in your location, that would help. There's an echo.
Okay, hold on. I think, I think, I think, actually, I think he's asking my question, but I can't.
No, that's, there's a delay. That was talked, that was spoken earlier. If you could just mute that broadcast completely, we can talk on the phone.
Okay. Let me see. Yeah, okay. Am I, am I on?
Yes, you're on. Go right ahead, sir.
Oh, okay. My name is Gene Polito. I'm from New York. I'm part of the Southampton Airport Advisory Committee, and it pertains to a question about if you require prior permission for, for use at the airport in Montauk. I don't see why the, you know, all this issue about diversion is, it's not in their hands, right in their particular hands. They can, should be able to control it. Doesn't, wouldn't that be, make, make sense?
Yeah, I think the issue is they may not have any interest in controlling it.
Well, how could they not have interest in controlling their own airport?
Because, well, because it may be that they are much interested in the profits that they would receive from landing fees and therefore would want to open it up rather than close it down. I think that's the concern.
That, 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 that should not bear on us, on our decision. That is a local decision. I mean, that should certainly not bear on, on.
Yeah, Gene, it would absolutely bear on us as East Hampton Town Representatives. Montauk's part of our town, so it's, it has to be a consideration that we would make.
Yeah, but if they, if, if the locals don't want to control it, I mean, they just throw it in your lap and, and blame it on you? I mean, they have the ability to control, they need permission to land there, right? Who do they get it from? They get it from East Hampton or they get it from Montauk? It's a private airport.
They get it from the private owner.
Well, that, that's it, and then the onus is on the private owner.
I, I wish it was that simple.
Well, I don't know. Anyhow, that's my, that's my issue. Thank you.
Thanks for calling, Gene. You well.
Sure.
Michael, do we have any other callers?
Excuse me, no, we don't. We have a caller on hold who's spoken, and then a caller whose number, when I opened it, nobody spoke.
Okay, so that's 27 members of the public and, what, almost three hours now. I'd like to move on at this point to the next presentation, which is an update from our Altech Council, Nick Regano, regarding the Superfund site. As many in the public will know, that there has been concerns over PFOS, PFOWA, ornated chemicals, contaminated groundwater. Hello, Nicholas.
Hello, Supervisor. Thanks for joining us today.
Thanks for joining us today. You have a presentation to bring folks up to date on the status of the Superfund site designated by the New York State D C regarding PFOS, PFOWA.
Yes, I do, and I'm going to share my screen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen. Yeah. Okay, can you see a presentation?
Yes.
On the screen? Okay, great.
Yeah, thanks, Nick.
Okay, so as the Supervisor mentioned, I am outside counsel to the town of East Hampton with respect to the airport Superfund site as well as with respect to the town's efforts to mitigate its liability through litigation and otherwise. And so I wanted to present to the public today as to the status. to the public today as to the status of the Superfund Process, give an overall update, and compare, you know, where the town is to where we expect to be going forward, as well as where other sites that are similar to the town's airport site are where we sit today. So let's move to the first slide. So as the Supervisor mentioned, the contaminants of concern here are PFOS. And so PFOS is a group of around 4,000, maybe more, man-made chemicals. They don't exist in nature. They primarily are comprised of fluorine and carbon bonds. The most studied PFOS chemicals are PFOA and PFOS, which have been designated as hazardous substances under New York law. On August 26, 2020, New York State issued maximum contaminant levels, which are binding drinking water levels of these contaminants of 10 parts per trillion each. And this is a frame of reference. It's almost like spinning in an ocean and kind of. It's one part per billion is equivalent to a single drop, approximately equivalent to a single drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. 10 parts per trillion are amounts to approximately 100 times less than that, meaning if you combine 100 Olympic-sized swimming pools and put a single drop in it, that would reach the level at issue here. So the levels at which, you know, D.C. or the state regulates these contaminants are very, very low. PFOA and PFOS and other chemicals have been used, as many of you know, in many products for decades, including a product called Aquas Film Forming Foam, or what Nomenklature out there is, is ATRF. So what is ATRF? ATRF is a fire suppression foam used by fire departments, the military, et cetera, et cetera, to extinguish Class B fires, which often involve jet fuel. As a result, PFOS contamination has been detected throughout the country at airports, fire stations, and fire training areas, among other sites, also military sites as well. So we know the town airport has been designated as a Superfund Site. That is the result of PFOS compounds and really the result of ATRF, that fire suppression foam we just mentioned, being used. So ATRF was not stored or used by the town, based on our diligence that we've conducted. Instead, it was used by the East Hampton Fire Department. The East Hampton Fire Department is not operated by the town, but instead it's operated by the village. And we've attempted to work closely with the village on this, but have not received the level of operation that we've hoped to receive. In 2016, the town received a survey, a form survey from D.C. to disclose all locations where or events in which ATRF was used at the airport or surrounding areas. Because the town did not use ATRF, you know, the town passed the survey along to the fire department, since they had the information. The fire department completed the survey and confirmed that ATRF was unfortunately used and stored at and around the airport. The town also completed its own survey in accordance with D.C.'s request that effectively said, you know, the fire department had the information. There were additional disclosures in the town survey, but that's effectively what the town disclosed to D.C., which was accurate. D.C. then used this information as well as other information based on, you know, investigations that have been conducted throughout the country, and determined that the investigation of the airport, a preliminary investigation of the airport, was warranted. And so to facilitate that investigation, the Town Board, and I know Jim Brendidge is on as well, diligently combed through records, pictures, interviewed fire department personnel, and ultimately obtained information to submit to D.C. to facilitate their initial investigation of the airport. And that investigation did result in detections of PFOA and PFOS in both the soil and groundwater, not only at the airport, but also there's a fire station just south of the airport on Industrial Road, as well as a fire training facility on Industrial Road as well. And so D.C. conducted a preliminary investigation at those sites and determined that PFOA and PFOS were detected in the soil and groundwater at those sites. So before all that occurred, well, after the survey was completed and before D.C. did that investigation, Suffolk County Department of Health Services also conducted its own investigation throughout Waynes Scott of private drinking water wells of Waynes Scott residents that are located down gradient or downstream really of the airport property, and found that levels of PFOA and PFOS were detected in some private drinking water wells of certain Waynes Scott residents. That sampling occurred in 2017. And after analyzing the results, Suffolk County issued a Water Quality Advisory, Code 11, 2017. And it's, you know, important to note that within that notice, again, this is really the first public notice made by any health body or regulatory agency indicating that there was an issue. Within that notice, the notice stated, "As a precaution, the Town of East Hampton has offered to provide bottled water to property owners in the private well survey area as described above." So I mean, real kudos to the Town Board for being on top of this, really in advance, or with Suffolk County and the regulators, as they really could not have acted quicker. Within the first two months of that Water Quality Advisory, the town began discussions with Suffolk County Water Authority, and ultimately agreed to pay for the extension of the public water main, which is now a completed project. The project was really unprecedented. It called for a nine-mile water main extension throughout Waynes Scott. And as I mentioned, the project's complete, cost the town a little over $7 million total. And that's really to extend the water main itself. And throughout this whole process to date, D.C. has found that all the town's actions have been necessary and appropriate. So we're left now with the three properties, the airport, the fire station, and the fire training facility. And so, you know, there's two different, I guess, I'll call them mantras in the environmental world. You want to protect, obviously, public health. It's of paramount importance. But you also want to protect the environment. And simply by, you know, extending the water main, you know, that may protect public health, but the environment is still impacted. And so D.C. did designate the properties as a Class II Superfund Site due to the PFOA and PFOS detections in soil and groundwater at these three properties. It's of note that the entire airport is not, at this point, designated as a Superfund Site. Around 40, I think it's 47 acres of the airport is designated as a Superfund Site. It's primarily the north, northeastern area of the airport is really where the Superfund designation lies. The entirety of the fire station property and the entirety of the fire training facility property are designated as Superfund Sites. So this contamination was caused by the fire department's use and storage of ATRF. As we mentioned, that's the fire suppression foam that contains these compounds, in response to fires and for training. There's no evidence, this is of note, or allegation of any intentional polluting activity such as dumping. It was simply use in response to crashes, training, and potentially storage as well, with leaking would occur. The town has hired the best environmental consultant, in my view, on Long Island, FPM Group. And to date, the town has worked very closely with D.C. The town has submitted a citizen participation plan, an investigation work plan to D.C. for approval. The town has been waiting for D.C. to approve that investigation work plan for months. And, you know, we need that D.C. approval before proceeding. Everything has to be done throughout this process with D.C. approval. The town did sign, as I mentioned, a consent order with D.C. And that does, you know, again, kudos to the Town Board for doing so. It allows the town to investigate and remediate these properties and really further protect public health and the environment with D.C. oversight and approval. Without signing that consent order, it really would drag on the process much longer because D.C. would be forced to do it themselves and pay for it. And it would just ultimately be a disaster. And ultimately, if that was the process that the town sought to pursue, in which D.C. would go ahead and do everything themselves, D.C. would ultimately, at the end of the day, sue the town for all of its costs incurred anyway. So there's really no point in proceeding in that manner. So the Town Board, in my view, made the correct decision in executing the consent order upon D.C.'s demand. So the next steps in the Superfund Process, as I mentioned, we have the investigation work plan pending. The town expects to have D.C. approval with respect to that work plan shortly, likely within the next 30 days. Sampling will likely commence this summer. The purpose of the sampling is to determine how deep, how far, and how much the contamination, how much contamination there is at around and emanating from the airport. This process will likely take a few years. And it's of note that the purpose of this sampling that will be conducted is different than the sampling that D.C. conducted. D.C. conducted sampling only to identify whether the contaminants exist at the site. And really, they do that to determine whether a site should be designated as a Superfund Site. The sampling the town will conduct under D.C. oversight and approval is really the sampling necessary to determine how to remediate the contamination. So it's not to identify it. It's to figure out how deep and how far and where we have to ultimately remediate the contamination. And so this process will take a few years to do. It's a very big process because we, it does appear that the contamination has flowed off-site, but, you know, no definitive conclusion on that yet. That's part of the sampling process. And then once the sampling process is complete, again, it'll take a few years, D.C. will consider all the remedial alternatives after considering all the data, and then select the alternative that D.C. deems appropriate. And the town will have some input into determining, you know, what, or determining what is the proper remedial approach here. But ultimately, the town will implement the remedies selected by D.C. Again, the town will have some input there. So that's really the next steps in the process. I would expect D.C.'s decision not to come for, you know, let's call it four or five years. Could be less, could be more, but that's, that's the estimate. So wanted to kind of compare where, I guess, the East Hampton Airport lies in comparison to some other sites in New York State with respect to PFOA and PFOS contamination. So the East Hampton Airport, to date, based on D.C.'s investigation, we found, or D.C. found approximately 299.3 parts per trillion of combined PFOA and PFOS in groundwater. So that's around 30 times the 10 parts per trillion drinking water standard, which, by the way, also doubles down as a, you know, groundwater cleanup standard in New York. When you compare those levels with other sites, you'll see that, you know, the East Hampton Airport has much lower levels than a lot of the other sites in New York State. Gabreski Airport, which is in, I believe it's Southampton, has almost 60,000 parts per trillion. And that's, I believe, just a PFOS, not PFOA also. Hampton Bay's Fire Station is 2,400 parts per trillion. The Husick Falls landfill, I think we, if you read about PFOA and PFOS, you'll, Husick Falls will be one of the first locations that will come up, has 25,000 parts per trillion. And actually, that landfill isn't, wasn't the initial culprit as to the contamination detected in Husick Falls. It was a manufacturing facility there. Stewart Air Force Base in Newburgh, that's in upstate, 14,800 parts per trillion. The Suffolk County Fire Training Center, 15,000 parts per trillion. And Westchester County Airport has around 65,000, a little more than 65,000 parts per trillion of PFOA and PFOS. So we don't fully know the full extent of the problem at the East Hampton Airport yet, but based on the information we have today, the levels are far lower than many other sites in New York State. So to date, the town has commenced two separate lawsuits to recover costs in connection with the water main extension and costs with respect to the Superfund investigation and remediation. The lawsuits has been, have been commenced against over a dozen parties, including, you know, multi-billion dollar companies such as 3M, who actually produced PFOS and firefighting foam, ATRF, and DuPont, who primarily produced PFOA, but also other constituents used in firefighting foam, as well as many other manufacturers and parties for all of the town's damages. There's also a lawsuit that the town separately commenced against the Village of East Hampton for operation of the East Hampton Fire Department, which caused the contamination at issue. And the village's insurer, the village has very significant insurance. The town is seeking for that insurer to cover a cost, a portion of the town's cost, if not all of it, as well as to obtain information from the village as to where they use ATRF. As I mentioned, it's been not the easiest of goes with the village in obtaining that information to date. Further, a class action was commenced by certain Waynes Scott residents against some of those same manufacturers that the town commenced suit against, including 3M. And the class action was also commenced against the town itself. And then all three of these actions were, they were all commenced in New York State courts, whether state or federal courts, but they were all ultimately moved to the, a multi-district litigation in the District of South Carolina, where over 100 similar cases are pending throughout the entire country. So that's where really the litigation lies. These litigations, obviously, you know, don't move quickly, but the town is very hopeful that the litigations are strong and will result in significant recoveries against, you know, these defendants. That is my presentation. And to the extent anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Nick. The board members have any questions for Nick at this point?
I know.
Michael, do you have any callers on the line?
We do have a caller. I can unmute the caller right now. The last four digits are 2187.
Thanks so much.
Hi, Nick. This is Arthur Melman again. I have a couple of questions with respect to the wells that have been testing this effluent now. Has there been any tests down in Waynes Scott? My recollection is that well tests in Waynes Scott didn't really produce an absolutely clear vector, because usually the farther away you go from the source, the smaller the, the lower the concentration. And there was some anomalies in some of the test wells. Has there been any effort now to find out if there was an additional source of contaminant, namely some of the prior industrial uses at the airport or something like that, either by, I don't know if you can fingerprint the effluent, the contaminant in Waynes Scott, or do any calculation of rates of travel and stuff like that?
That's a great question. So we are operating with D.C. oversight and approval. To the extent D.C. requests that we conduct that analysis, we will do so. But as of today, it does appear that ATRF is the primary source of contamination in the area. And D.C. has not requested that, or suggested that that is not the case otherwise.
Arthur, well, I think.
One last question.
Arthur, I think one of the reasons that you're getting very results in the private well testing is that not all wells are equal in terms of the depth that they're drilled. Imagine different length straws going into the strata, and some might pick up a layer of contamination, and while others may be deeper potentially or shallower, and therefore don't show those contaminants.
That's correct.
Last question, Nick. You said that the Superfund designated area is, it's 299 parts per trillion, I think. What was the worst contamination level in Waynes Scott per trillion?
I believe the highest level found in a drinking water well was over 700 parts per trillion. That's going off the top of my head. You know, again, the entire D.C.'s investigation looked at, it was just to identify whether the contaminants exist, or whether the contamination exists. So we're going to conduct an investigation to figure out where, how deep, and how much. It's also the nature of ATRF use, where you have a start and stop release, where effectively, you know, if you have a barrel of oil leaking into a river, and then that barrel of oil stops leaking, you know, you're gonna, you may have, it may be difficult to, there may be a break in the chain going back. So ATRF use is a quick start and stop, right, when it's used. So we'll see where it all comes out. These questions are all very good questions, but they're better answered, I think, after the investigation is completed.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks for calling, Arthur. Do you have any other callers on the line right now?
No, we do not.
Any other questions for Nick?
No, thank you, Nick, as always.
Thanks so much, Nick. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think it helps the public understand a bit of the history and where we stand status-wise. I think it helps the public understand a bit of the history and where we stand status-wise. Our next topic of discussion is the special V F R, which is visual flight rules, special visual flight rules discussion. It's going to center around a practice, also known as SCUD running, practice primarily by helicopters approaching when there are low ceilings. And we have our outside counsel, again, Bill O'Connor from Cooley.
Thanks, Peter. I think we can cover this topic in, in a short amount of time. Looks like Jim Brendidge has dropped off. He was on the call earlier, but really, Jim has felt very strongly and worked very hard to address this practice. The town board as well has felt very strongly about the use of special V F R clearances at the airport. In a nutshell, this is an issue that previously occurred while the tower was in operation, which is during the season. And what you have when the tower is in operation, you have class, what's called Class D airspace around the airport. And Class D has certain requirements for you to be able to operate in that airspace visually. In other words, without flight instruments, you need to be visually maintaining separation from other aircraft and being able to see where you're going. Typically, the minimum requirements to be in Class D airspace under visual flight rules is you need three miles of visibility. So you need to be able to see three miles without any obstruction from marine layer or clouds. You need to stay 500 feet below any clouds, 1,000 feet above them, and maintain 2,000 feet horizontal separation for those clouds. So what happens in Class D airspace when the weather is marginal? Many aircraft that are operating V F R can't operate because the visibility and the minimums are not sufficient. However, there was a process for requesting clearance through our contract air traffic control tower to ask for special treatment essentially, to be flying under special V F R rules. And under those circumstances, you only need one mile of visibility, and you just need to stay clear of clouds, basically fly around them. So what that can create in the area around the airport in those weather conditions are, first of all, you have less minimums. You have greater chance that a pilot will become disoriented or not know where they're going. There have been well documented cases recently, some several high profile ones, involving accidents in these types of conditions. And it also can tend to push the traffic lower to the ground, which, you know, for, in any aircraft, gives you less flexibility, less options if you were to have a significant problem with your aircraft. You don't, you don't have altitude, and altitude is your friend in those situations. So, you know, what the town has done and has worked within the things that it can control, and with its contract partner, Robinson Aviation, we are no longer going to be granting those clearances to fly special V F R. So we believe that's an enhanced safety measure for the residents of the town of East Hampton, for all airport operators to operate in the Class D airspace when the tower is open and operational.
Thank you, Bill. Any, any questions from board members? I know we've all been working to change this practice. It does concern many of us, both from a safety standpoint and obviously a noise standpoint when you have very low-flying aircraft. Be quite disconcerting. Anything from the board on that?
No, I think it's an appropriate measure right now for, you know, health and safety. And I'm happy that Jim has brought it to us, and I look forward to moving this forward this way. I think they'll, based on how we're on a prominence out here on Long Island, we get a lot of weather that I don't think that people that aren't rated to fly should be flying in. So I support this.
We do have a caller on the line now. Michael, do you want to let the caller in?
Sure. This caller's last four digits are 7563. I'll unmute that now. Hello, caller, you're live with the town board. Are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Great, great, thank you. This is Teresa McCaffrey calling again. With regards to the S V F R, could you, could you please elaborate with regards to where the route, where the holding pattern will be for the flights that are going to be coming in into H T O once this has been implemented? And at what altitude will they be coming in at?
Teresa, this is Bill. I want to defer to Jim on those specifics. It's really good questions. I just don't know specifically whether traffic will be permitted to hold at all until the weather clears, or whether they'll have to divert somewhere else. Jim's much better suited than me to talk about where specifically that might occur. We can get, we can get back to you on that, Teresa.
Yeah, we can get, we can get in touch with Jim and get that information to you.
Okay, that, yeah, because from what I understand, as we had discussed, I should, the holding pattern will be over the Matituck or, you know, north of the East Hampton area. And that is quite concerning on behalf of the town of Southhold. And I also wanted to mention that if I recall correctly from the Eastern Region Helicopter Council, and if they happen to be online, I hope that they would be able to comment as well. But I believe the 50% of their pilots are I F R trained. And I believe they have quite, quite a bit of equipment that is I F R equipped. So I'm very concerned about if we can, if there's any way we can get a little bit more of a calculation of aircraft that is, it would even be anticipated to come into East Hampton Airport based on the, the current changes that the town board is taking. And I certainly do understand, you know, why the town board is taking these steps. So totally understand that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Teresa. We'll try to get you that information. Michael, do we have any other callers on the line?
Yes, we do. I have another caller with the last four digits 2026. I'll unmute that now. Looks like that caller actually just hung up. So no, we do not have any more callers.
That actually completes our agenda items for today's meeting. Appreciate all the comments from the public. It's good to hear from everyone. This is the beginning of what will be an ongoing discussion about future possibilities for our airport as the grant assurances expire in September. And we are very happy to hear from you and have your engagement in that process. And I want to thank all of our presenters today, outside counsel, Bill O'Connor from Cooley, Nick Reggano, and also H R N A and H M M H for today's presentation. And at this point, we'd like to move on to liaison reports. And Kathy, do you have a liaison report for us today?
I do, and I'll keep it short since our meeting's been so lengthy. So members of town staff met with Cityscape on Friday. It's our weekly meeting. We reviewed the changes to the poll that was discussed at the wireless committee meeting, although we're still waiting. Joanne is going to pilgrim, is going to put together some notes for us because there were some things we wanted to elaborate on. We reviewed with Cityscape the inventory maps. They're now working on the coverage maps. And they would be available for a presentation to the town board at the June 15th work session, where they go over like a wireless 101 kind of tutorial, go over the inventory and coverage maps, talk about the coverage gaps in the community. Not that many of us know where those gaps are, but now we'll have it laid out for us. We'll review the final poll questions, and then we can go and field the poll. The other thing we learned yesterday is that the Cow on Stephen Hand's path and Montauk Highway is now operational. Cow is sell on wheels, and that's, Verizon is the carrier there.
Here you now.
Moving on to Maidstone Playground in Maidstone Park. It was brought to my tent and at the Spring C A C meeting that the steel monkey bars were loose and rusted, and they have been removed. Also going to be doing some maintenance in that little playground area. The five bar will be installed around the playset tomorrow to bring that level up. Concerned resident in Springs reached out to me to inform me that there was graffiti on the jetty at Maidstone and on some rocks at Gerard Drive. I reached out to Chief Sarlo and Chief Harbor Master Michael, so an investigation could take place. Tony Littman is working to, to remove that graffiti. They didn't make first, too much progress with their first attempt, and they're going to be trying another approach tomorrow. And then lastly, David said my office is looking to hire a full-time intern for the summer to assist us. We know it's going to be busy, particularly where special events are concerned. And we're hoping that we can find a young person in the community that's, you know, in college or postgraduate student that has an interest in municipal government and, you know, would like to work alongside us this summer. So there's ads running in the paper this week. And if you go on the town website under how do I apply for employment opportunities, you'll see information about the post, job posting, and how to get your resume and cover letter to us. And that's what I've got for today.
Thank you, Kathy. David?
Thank you very much. I wanted to let the board know that I'll have a resolution next week. This would be for the Cove Hall of Stormwater Pipe and Engineering Services. This is an ongoing project that we have going with the, within the Village of East Hampton and within the town. It's going to be for a budget amount to that, which should be coming out of the C P F Water Quality Fund, the funds for $5,000. This will be for additional work, pretty much to coordinate with New York State D O T, the town trustees, the Village of East Hampton, to move the project forward as we're getting close to that stage right now. So I hope you support that. And any other questions, please contact Melissa. But that project's moving well, and has some good design into it right now. And aquaculture, want to let everyone know that the oyster gardening program started up this past weekend successfully. And that's moving ahead as the weather, you know, gets better on us. Let everyone know that scallops have been pulled from the wintering, wintering grounds and seeded. Overwintering survival rate was very well for scallops this year at 70%. I hope that lasts way into November, and we can get a good batch of scallops for our fisheries and also for our taste buds. Clam cultures are also going well, and they'll be moving forward shortly with that. That is millions of clams and a lot of work on that aquaculture. Also, oysters have, oyster spawns, they've been moved to the nursery this week, and we hope for limited mortality during their move right now to the nursery. So aquaculture's moving forward and enjoying being outside. I want to let the board be aware that Buildings and Grounds is moving forward. We had a project down at Ambigance Beach at the Comfort Station, in which the water line down there had some issues since they recently installed some, some town water in the area, which is, you know, in ways, it's a good thing. But we had to retrofit part of our, our sleeves of our water access to that Comfort Station. I want to thank, you know, thank Richard Webb and also Buildings and Grounds for getting on that really well with Jim Terrier Ploner right now, so we can get the Comfort Station open in time. And successfully, it's been complete. So if you see any construction down there, that's what that is for. I want to let everyone know from Parks and Recreation that Town Lifeguards and also Recreation AIDS are still needed for the summer season. So if anyone has any interest in that, please contact those departments. Again, Recreation Department for Town Lifeguard, seasonal, or also Recreational Park AIDS at 324-4141. I also do know that if you're interested in becoming a T C O for the season, please contact the East Hampton Town Police Department at 537-7575. This will be for seasonal positions. I just want to screen share something quickly if I can. This is coming forward. This is just an update as far as the Montauk Skate Park and Skate Park's design. We have got some updated preliminary designs here. Tito Peralta and part of Pivot Customs is having a public opinion. This is part of our community outreach. We will get this place onto our town's website. But if anyone wants to go and take a photo of this Q R code, or the whole picture in general, please pass it along to individuals that like skateboarding at the Parker's touch. They get some ideas about how we move this project and design forward from, from the community. So we'll get this outreach also, but I want to let the board know that that's moving forward.
David, I like the Q R code.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk about those a little bit in my liaison report.
Perfect, sounds great. So that's moving, that's moving forward there. I want to let the, also, where am I? I've had conversations with Steve Lynch also. We're looking into the Hamlet studies and about some, some safety issues and redesigns at the intersection of North Main and Cedar Street, particularly for pedestrian safety on there. So we just had an opening discussion on that. So he might be bringing that forward in the next couple of months down there to implement some safety designs. I want to let everyone know just part of, again, if I can just screen share something quickly to everyone. In Montauk this weekend, I know, Peter, you might discuss it, but, you know, part of my daily or weekly, you know, treks out there, it seems like now for softball. The Montauk Beach with replenishment project's going very well. This is looking west from, I believe it's from South Edgemere. The sand is looking great. It's sticking there, the contractor's moving up and down and grading it. And you can see they haven't graded this looking east here yet because they still need that access point for, for the vehicles on the beach. But the sand looks good, and it's also staying in place and doing what it's needed to. So we're hoping for that for a nice summer season. Second, also on there, I just want to let everyone know in Montauk specifically, this is part of our, Peter, I thank you for moving this forward. Again, the emergency communications projects that we have. This is the base of the Montauk Tower, which will, again, aid and assist with the completions of the town's townwide communication towers. This tower is going in, the puddings have gone in, they're going to start building it on-site right now to the, to its total height. And then they'll repave the road. But I want to let the board know that that's moving forward at a good, good speed. And individuals in Montauk are going to see some construction delays as far as traffic going in and out of the recycling center. Please just, you know, one at a time. And that's all I have. That's my liaison report. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sylvia?
Yeah, just two things. One is the Business Recovery Group met last Friday, and Southampton Hospital has two COVID patients there as of, I'm sorry, last Wednesday. Did I, I think I said Friday, last Wednesday. They had two COVID patients. Stony Brook has 50, 23 are in ICU. Eastern Long Island has none. So we are seeing a downward trend. They are now opening the hospital for limited visitation if you want to go. You can get your details if you call the hospital ahead of time. The hospital is busy. So just, you know, but if you do have someone you'd want to visit, please call them ahead of time for the, for the times. There was concern that the, there's a large percentage of folks not coming in for their second dose of vaccine. So just want to get it out there that if you've had the first dose, it's really up to you to get the second dose to be fully vaccinated. And Robert Ross also said that June 5th is the last day of testing at the high school. So testing will remain here at Town Hall and in Montauk, but testing at the high school will be completed by June 5th. They also, the town has put out a letter that we'll be sending to the restaurant owners with the latest information on what is expected of the restaurants for outdoor use, for tents, for, you know, what, what is now the guidelines. And so I, Peter, I don't know if your office has sent that around to other board members.
Yes, I was going to report on that, but yes, we did send that letter around to restaurants and business owners.
Yeah, great. And so anyway, thank you for getting that done, and I'll let you finish up on reporting on that. The Arts Council also met. And again, they're still looking at working and trying to find a solution for Brooks Parks. They have a few things that are-
They have a few things that are, I guess, things that they're juggling to make it happen. If it can, they've also been working with the Property Management Committee and seeing if they can work together to make something happen. I am happy to report that the Art Barge, which we gave historic designation last year, has been awarded a new moniker. And so I'll report on and send around that to the, it's an honor for them to be, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm so sorry, but Chris Cohen from the Art Barge sent this around and I'll send it around to the board members so that, you know, we can be very proud of working with the Art Barge and getting it as a historical, as historically designated. It gives them a lot of leverage now to go out and get other grants and things that they need for renovation and what, and other aspects. We're also had a guest at, at the Arts Council meeting, Mary Millen, who is the head of the Arts Alliance. So we're working with them in cooperation with the Artists Alliance of East Hampton and that's a nice thing to be working on, on projects with them. They're doing Art Apart. Remind again that Art Apart is a program that they did last year. And it, this really happened because of COVID. This year they're doing it Art Apart, but together again. And I think that's what we're all hoping for, that as we open up slowly, the Art Apart project will be the 24th, rain date, the 25th of June. And that is my report.
Thanks, Sylvia. Jeff?
Hi. The AMAC Committee met on Friday and we were discussing with some anticipation today's work session and I'm glad to see it went smoothly and we had some AMAC people here questioning and commenting. Jim Brundage issued his director's appoint, his director's report and it's kind of interesting because it basically shows operations, you know, steadily increasing. He, he produced a report from 2019 with total operations of 2774. 2020, which is obviously the off year, still had an increase, not a huge increase, to 3,054 total operations. And then year to date, 2021 is up fairly significantly to over 4,800 total operations. And really in all the categories, the, the total operations are going up, except in 2020, helicopters, for obvious reasons, dropped from, in 2019, it was 678 total operations. This is January through April, by the way. And in, in 2020, when COVID was really hitting, that dropped to just under 500. But in general, you know, Jim reports that 2020 versus 2021 helicopters were up 107%. Jets were up 175%. Turboprops up 162%. Seaplanes up 200%. Piston planes up 31%. But he also did a comparison to see if it was a little bit more accurate between 2021 and 2019, which was a more normal year. And you still see significant rises. Helicopters up 48%, jobs up 200, I'm sorry, jets up 225%. Turboprops up 74%. Seaplanes down 10%. Piston planes up 65%. So it, it looks like, you know, the, the escalation of operations is going to continue despite the, the temporary slowdown in 2020, which I find interesting. I also talked to Jim about the routes in connection with denial of special VFR if a pilot comes in and asks for special VFR and is denied. What he advises is because of fuel constraints, it's very unlikely that they're going to be in a holding pattern. He said it might be a rare thing that they do. And if they are in a holding pattern, it's likely they would do a couple of loops out over the ocean. But he again thinks that the constraints on fuel are going to prevent people from, from, from holding in the air. I think that's what Teresa McCaskey was worried about. I wanted to go back a little bit to something that we talked about last week. And that was the, the resolution for the Democratic Committee Woman that I was talking to Peter about for $3,500. And Peter, I remember that you, you mentioned that you went out and got this individual after asking for responses to proposals from two outside vendors and she was the lowest price and best response. I checked in the department that should have that documentation and they don't have any documentation on that. So I wanted to ask you if you would to produce that. I thought it was a little unusual not to see any of that documentation. And I still would like to find out a little more detail on the work that is either going to be performed or has been performed on.
I, I'm happy to give you the information on that, Jeff. No work has been performed and in fact, no purchase order has been issued to date. The concern was that we might need the services of web designer because we don't actually have that capability in our IT department as part of the COVID response for Vaccination Center. And while it's not necessary under these circumstances to put forth a resolution to expend those funds, I did so anyway for full transparency. The other individual who also looked at giving us a response, we felt was also previously engaged and also they're frankly, their written response to us, as capable as they may have been, was probably a little bit rushed and we felt that Anne Marie McCoy would be able to do what we needed, should we need to call on her. So we had that available to us and waiting in the wings. And that's, that's pretty much the process, Jeff.
So, so I can get the two proposals that you were comparing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to share that with you. Again, under COVID emergency, it's not necessary for that type of expenditure to have authorization from the town board, but I was hoping to, you know, have the cooperation of the board under those circumstances. And I believe you did vote yes and approve that resolution. So it's kind of a little after the fact, I guess, but it, you know, whatever information you might need, happy to provide that for you.
Well, I took you at your word that you had a couple of proposals and I'd like to see them and I was a little surprised that there was no paperwork in the department.
Yeah, I understand.
Usually handle that.
Understand, and I'm very happy to, very happy to share that with you as well and talk to you about why I selected who I did. Again, no work's been performed and that's pretty much placeholder in case we need those services.
I also wanted to talk about an issue that's, you know, been talked about a little bit, and that is the food pantries and the Bon Jovi event. I, I want to, I want to say something clearly that, you know, my, my concern is certainly not John Bon Jovi's works to get food out to East Hampton residents or to create a distribution center for food. But I did raise a concern over our ethics code about an event that just happened because it involved a pretty expensive private concert and a pretty fancy dinner that was offered to all of the town board members. And I, as you know, I attended just to have drinks and then I, I left because I was concerned that the size of this gift, this hospitality was such that it violated our, our ethics code. Our ethics code prevents us from accepting any gift in excess of $75. And, you know, this is a private concert by a member of the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, so it's certainly a ticket that's probably upwards of, you know, $2,000 if it were to be, to be purchased. And so my, my, you know, my, I left, left, I, I attended the event because I, I wanted to be respectful for the 20, toward the 20 frontline workers that were invited. But I also left because I was concerned about the appearance that it might create. You know, we have these, these rules exist for a reason. They're anti-corruption rules. And, you know, these days of sort of sophisticated marketing, people don't hand people bags of money to get influence with officials. Generally, it's done through hospitality and friendship. And I, I was a little concerned that folks looking at us taking a very large gift from a private business might wonder, you know, is that business going to get the same kind of scrutiny that any other business would get if I make a complaint about traffic or if I'm concerned about noise? And I just thought it was too close to the line. I think it's, you know, it's partly about our obligation under our ethics code. I mean, it is part of our local law and I don't see how we can avoid, you know, examining carefully the hospitality and gifts that people offer us. And I just thought this was a pretty excessive gift. It's, it's also a question of exercising judgment. I mean, I practice in a profession which is very rule bound with ethics questions. And, you know, the best advice I have always gotten is just, if you're getting close to the line, steer the other way. And so that's why I decided to leave the event early and I unfortunately didn't see the, the show of John Bon Jovi and I'm a big fan, so I regret that. But I, I do think that, you know, people are concerned nationally and locally that this is what, this is what people detest about what's going on in Washington and national politics. That people are using hospitality and influence and money to affect policies or to get things through. And I just think it's, it's a, it's a bad appearance. And I, I just, and I also want to revert to something, a discussion that we had just about a year ago in April, because we have a disagreement about the function of our govern, of our local government. And, you know, my feeling about local government is that it's an engine and a mechanism to assist, you know, our people when they're hungry or when they're in a crisis, when they need face masks and can't get them, or when they need COVID testing. And, you know, last April, I sat in front of the board with all of you and, you know, somewhat spontaneously just said, you know, let's, let's give $10,000 to each of the food pantries, Meals on Wheels and East Hampton Cares. And I got, you know, shut down on that. You said they're doing fine. I check in every day. They get big contributions. They don't need them. That wasn't, that wasn't accurate. And you know that wasn't accurate because the next day we got an email about it, as did the entire town board, saying that gee, that, those contributions, you know, could have been helpful. And I'm, I'm saying this because I feel then, I felt then and I feel now, that when we have long lines of people going to these food pantries when they're serving three times the volume of food to needy people, that it's, it's important that we don't stand behind the groups that are hustling the contributions, that we get some skin in the game and say, we, we've got your back. And, you know, I contrasted it with actions that the board took just three weeks later to pay for $60,000 worth of public relations. And I just don't think that's the way local government should act. And, you know, it seems like every time we have a need like this, Peter, it's your tendency to wait, you know, for a wealthy donor to pick up the ball and run. You did the same thing on COVID testing in Montauk. You, you pitched me on, on, we waited to get COVID testing in Montauk until you found a private donor and pitched me on, on accepting that money. And it was from Mark Rowan, a person that we were being sued by, that had cost us half a million dollars. And then when I objected to it, you kind of challenged me to go out and talk to Southampton Hospital to see if I could convince them. You said I couldn't convince them.
Jeff, can I just ask you?
Let me just finish.
Can I just ask a question? Is this a liaison report or is this a political?
Yeah.
This is a report, this is a.
On what? On your reporting?
I'm reporting on transparency and the role of our government. And I'm, I'm.
And we vote on everything and have been very.
Let Jeff finish his comments. We, you know, we're, we're three, what, almost four hours in. Go ahead and take as long as you need, Mr. Bragman, to say whatever you'd like to say today.
I want to say that there's, there was a similar, you know, feeling about Montauk testing, which would have cost us about $35,000. You waited for a private donor. You encouraged us to work with Mark Rowan, who was suing us. When I objected, you challenged me to go out and talk to the head of Southampton Hospital. And I did and said, hey, you know, if the, and the town board agreed that I could go out and talk to him, by the way. Everyone in this room agreed. So I went and talked to him and I said, you know, we feel it's our responsibility to pay. Is that okay with you? And he said, sure, it's fine. I have no problem with it. But you wouldn't go with that. And you found a way to get, to get those contributions in. And my point is that when we operate as a small. Excuse me, Sylvia. You can, you can criticize me or mock me when I'm dumb. You don't mind. My, my, my point is a simple, my point is a simple one. And, and that is that we, it's, we got to stick our hand in our pockets to help our people. And that part of the reason that we do it and part of the reason that we follow our ethics rule is, is because it creates a predictable, transparent means of government that gets us to the best answers. And frankly, I'm worried not, I'm, I'm worried about my own behavior. I like to judge it carefully and I like to keep in mind what people think. And if you think that people watching us, you know, party at a private concert, you know, with a small group, only a small group of first line responders, shows, you know, a connection to the community, I, I think what it does is it undermines their confidence in our, in our objective. And I think it's the wrong way to go. And by the way, this isn't a political statement because most people I talked to said, I don't know, I don't think you're going to get any votes by doing this. This is something I believe.
But you put it on your Facebook, so I figured you were.
Wait, wait, hold on, Sylvia, hold on, hold on. Everybody let him finish. Let's please let him finish.
It's, I think it's, it's something to think about. We have a code of ethics. It's there for a reason. It provides guardrails. People don't corrupt us by bringing over bags of cash. And hospitality and the influence of money is a big problem. And I see you smiling, Kathy, but we've had corruption problems in East Hampton historically. It's happened here.
On this administration, Jeff.
Not, not in this administration.
On this administration. Thank you for acknowledging that.
I'm saying we are all vulnerable to it and we should watch our appearances and make sure that people don't, you know, have to. I don't know if I can make a noise.
Did you?
We understand your point. I just want to ask, are you finished?
I'm finished, Peter.
Thank you so much. I'd like to go on with my liaison report now and I'll start where Jeff left off. And that is to express what I had hoped to express, which was that Friday night at the clubhouse, the town board, the entire town board attended a fundraiser and a celebration of frontline health workers and food pantry volunteers. And Jeff says he raised concerns about this event, but I would ask him when, because he's never raised any of the concerns that he mentioned today to any of his town board members. I don't know that he actually raised them with the town attorney. He did however, after the event, raise them on Facebook as part of his political campaigning. And I'll just say that prior to this event, we went to the Ethics Committee. We got an interpretation and a ruling both from the town attorney and from the Ethics Committee. And I have that here. I'm happy to share that with any member of the public or the press that would like to see it. It's unfortunate that Mr. Bragman didn't consult our town attorney or the Ethics Committee about this issue. He decided to come for drinks only and leave before the value rose to 75, which is where he thought that would be. There is absolutely an exemption under New York state law ethics, which we were in complete and total compliance with. I presented proclamations to both Holly and Scott Rubenstein, owners of the clubhouse, thanking them for hosting the John Bon Jovi Food Bank, which was instrumental in bringing food to our local food pantries. I guess Jeff's position was that no wealthy individual in town should contribute, that the town should pay for everything. This is a community. This is a community where everybody gets to pitch in. He also raised questions about testing in Montauk. The hospital reached. The hospital reached out to me, the hospital foundation, Dr. Fred Weinbaum, about facilitating, helping to facilitate a testing site in Montauk. And we talked about doing it at the Playhouse. When Jeff Bragman found out one of their donors to the hospital foundation was somebody who we were in litigation over, he didn't want any part of it. My point is that when an organization, a charitable organization comes forward, and the hospital gets many donors from many locations, and the hospital foundation wants to help the town and work with the town to promote public health, it's pretty amazing that we get those kind of objections. But that's the difference in leadership. And, you know, I think going forward, these kind of problems and the questions raised, I think you'll see the political nature of them and take it with that in mind. I'll also say, I would like to continue with my liaison report.
I just want to say that when you proposed...
No, I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm sorry, Jeff. I'm sorry, can you not interrupt me while I give my liaison report?
You proposed COVID...
I waited completely till you were done, Jeff.
It was going to be fine announced by Mark Rowan. You changed it after...
I think you should let the supervisor have his time, as we give the councilman his time, particularly when you...
We were gracious enough to let you complete your statement. This is not an argument, this is a presentation of liaison reports.
I'm correcting a misstatement.
I would ask you to respect me and let me finish.
There's plenty of misstatements from you right now, Jeff.
Jeez.
Are you going to respect my time to offer my liaison report without interrupting?
I am, Peter, I wanted to correct a misstatement.
Can you do that? Can you do that, please?
I can do it if you will correct the statement and admit that you, that Mark Rowan was the person paying for COVID testing when you first proposed it.
Mr. Bragman, I just, I have to say, I'd like to be able to complete my statement here. For those of us who actually acted as frontline healthcare workers these past many months, bringing vaccinations to East Hampton, which no other town has been able to do, thanks to the leadership from the supervisor's office, working with the county executive, working with local volunteers, physicians, I'm happy to announce that we will enter another phase of providing vaccine, specifically in Montauk, at the Playhouse this Thursday from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. in conjunction with Southampton Stony Brook Hospital. There'll be 200 doses of Moderna, which is a four-week second-dose pod. You'll get first doses on the 13th and then four weeks later returned for second dose. The time was selected because we know that there are many working people and that they may not have access to daylight hours at a vaccination pod, even though New York state requires that employers give those individuals time off. Many may feel that they can't afford to do that, or the employers may not be willing to let them. So therefore, nighttime hours, we're getting assistance from the Montauk Fire Department. I want to thank John Mark, the fire commissioner there. They're going to provide ambulance service for this pod. They're going to allow parking to overflow onto the, from the Playhouse to the Montauk Fire Department. I'm also working with pediatrician Dr. Gail Schoenfeld. As many of you have been following the vaccines progression, the ages dropped again and again and again. We expect that 12 years and older will now be eligible. And over 1,100 doses are being prepared for a mass vaccination at our site in Wayne Scott on May 22nd. That would be a Pfizer dose, and second dose would be three weeks later. I wanted to thank all the many volunteers, including my wife, who's volunteered at every single pod that we've had during the duration of this event and continues to help out. I've attended every single one myself. As Councilman Leece, he's been instrumental in helping me put together this whole entire operation as the liaison to buildings and grounds. Tremendous amount of work goes into doing something like this. Again, that's why no other town has done it. And we continue to keep doing it, and we're going to do it as long as we need to and as long as we can serve our general public here. In addition, the fundraiser on Friday night raised $50,000 for Meals on Wheels, Meals on Wheels and Project Most. And it celebrated a number of our frontline healthcare workers, including a number of volunteers at our vaccination site and the directors of the local food pantries and some of their volunteers as well. East Hampton Town Police Department, along with OLA, the Eastern Long Island Training of folks on the use of Narcan, which is a way to neutralize the life-threatening effects of an opioid overdose, took place on the 27th of April at Vanny Church in Amagansett. And most accidental overdoses, as people might know, occur in the home setting, and it was developed by first responders and as well as family, friends and caregivers. The event went very well, and I want to read you a quote from Minerva Perez, the executive director of OLA. "I want to share the fabulous experience we had working with the East Hampton Town Police Department, helping to plan this lifesaving training in a way that was safe and effective during COVID and also in Spanish. Sergeant Alversa and Officer Morales were so approachable and encouraging, we had folks in the group who could not stop praising the experience." I think that's a tribute to our police department and our continuing effort of outreach within the community. Last night, we had a meeting of ACAC, and the discussion began with a presentation on QR codes and the technology that surrounds them by Kathleen Kirkwood. As I mentioned earlier, when David showed the sign for the potential Montauk skate park plan, there was a QR code on it. It's one of the many ways that people can get more information out of a small sign. You can simply just put your camera in photo mode, hold it up to the QR code, and it'll pop up a link to whatever information. There's quite a bit of the number of applications that this technology could be used for, from putting QR codes at trailheads, which could download a map of the area for trails. You could have nature walks where QR codes are on various species of trees and other features. Same with locations, historical properties, exhibits and whatnot. It's something that I think the town should look into furthering and using more frequently. More and more people are using smartphone technology, and it's a way to convey information. And conveying information is something that's extremely important, especially during a pandemic. And that's why we felt that it was very important to hire a PR firm to help us better reach the general public. That's really increased the engagement that we've had. And as was mentioned earlier, the food pantries received extremely large amounts of money. The one, I think, comment we got from somebody the following day, who had some association with the Montauk Food Pantry, that they could have used that kind of money. I went out and solicited and directed private donations to the Montauk Food Pantry, which they received within just a couple of days. You know, we had historic levels of giving, we've had historic levels of demand, and it's always about balancing that. My personal feeling is that the taxpayers of East Hampton have been hit hard, especially those of limited means, and that we should do everything we can to avoid raising their taxes. So I hope the general public appreciates those efforts to keep the budget in line, to not exceed, overpay. And, you know, moving forward, I plan on continuing to take that approach, keeping my powder dry and using resources when they're really needed. It's just too easy to say, oh, I'll just write a check and throw it at a problem. Takes a lot more to do the actual hard work to make things happen. The town emergency system is up and running, and we expect that all users will be completely online, if they're not already, before Memorial Day. The beach restoration, as David said, is ongoing. As of Friday, 11,621 cubic yards out of the 17,000 purchased have been located and spread. That work is ongoing, I'm sure they're much further along today. They expect that that work will be completed very shortly, I believe by Monday of next week. I did send out the letter from my office to restaurants about the expanded outdoor dining allowed by East Hampton Town by permit. Again, we've suspended zoning in favor of allowing restaurants to remain up to 100% capacity outdoors in response to the pandemic. Many people are still reluctant to go indoors to dine. It's a nice, it's a nice way to dine, especially in nicer weather. This emergency order would also allow for tents to be placed by permit and with inspection by the fire marshal and to remain up throughout the season or until the emergency order is rescinded. I'd like to talk to the town board about resuming in-person board meetings. I'd like to see us be able to meet again in the meeting hall in person, albeit with practicing social distancing. So I think it would require removing a number of the chairs to keep the appropriate spacing. I think there'll be the ability to do that very shortly, hopefully by, even by the next, by the last meeting of the month, potentially. May 19th is the date that the state is relaxing almost all business restrictions in terms of occupancy. I plan on having town hall reopen. We currently have the clerks' offices open, both here and in the annex in Montauk, but the rest of town offices with use of masks and proper social distancing. We'd like to be able to resume in-person services, so we'll be working towards that goal. And I would like to talk to LTV about continuing a potential hybrid type of meeting whereby people can call in. One of the things that we really strove to do during the pandemic is to increase the public's engagement. We stepped up our media posts across all platforms. We have a Facebook page, we have Twitter page, we have Instagram and the town website. And we also have used LTV to help get out the word with their crawler. So, you know, I think the response that we've gotten during COVID, the amount of engagement is really much higher with the call-in capability. So I would like to consider doing that as we move forward, to be able to keep that going. And currently, the tax office is also open, and people can go in person to pay their tax bill. Do we have any issue? Do you have any executive session items to discuss today?
Can I just also just comment, because I...
Yeah, sure.
To remind everybody, in the 2021 budget, we increased grants to a number of outside organizations because of this, you know, financial struggles they may find themselves in. Meals on Wheels got a $10,000 increase to $20,000. Project Most got a $40,000 increase to $85,000. Eleanor Whitmore Early Childhood Center got a $65,000 increase, which brought it up to grant to $155,000. And the Spring Food Pantry got a $15,000 increase to $20,000. And these were all organizations, you know, we've talked about, you know, we want to make sure our seniors have hot meals, our kids have quality after-school and childcare. And we know the struggles that families and folks in our community are having with food insecurity, and we address in the 2021 budget.
Kathy, thank you for pointing that out. Those were items they had put in the budget, and I really appreciate the board's support in approving that. At this point, I'd like to take a motion to go into exec session.
We have a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Peter, I just need one last thing, Peter. I understand we all have our opinions here, but it's the facts that count. And when information continues to go out in the public realm, either Facebook or letters that are editor about doing things illegally, I take them to heart. And sometimes when there's apology needed, maybe apology comes at some point in my life. And I'll move on to resolutions. I have a resolution, I'd like to offer resolution 2021-591. This is appoint seasonal custodians in the Parks Department at an hourly rate of $22, effective June 17th, 2021. This will be Anna German de Gonzalez and Irma Geraldo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
2021-592, Cove Hollow Stormwater Pipe CO for Engineering Services. Again, this is a change order for $5,000, which VHB will coordinate with New York State DOT, Town Trustees. District of East Hampton, Representatives directed by the town.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-593 is to approve a license for beekeeping program at the East Hampton Airport. It acknowledges the impacts of environmental issues on the viability of our bee populations, and it's an effort to do what we can to bolster the bee populations. And it creates a license agreement conditioned upon the licensee holding the town harmless and agreeing to indemnify us against any liability. And I want to thank Steve Tuma for bringing the idea up, I think it's a good idea.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-594, create accounts for home grant. The town of East Hampton required, reacquired two homes previously constructed under the town's Affordable Housing Program. Both houses need to be rehabilitated before they can be resold. The town applied to Suffolk County for an allocation of home funds, H-O-M-E. And the East Hampton will be receiving $210,000 pursuant to the Home Investment Partnership Program, contract between the town and Suffolk County, and resolve that the following two accounts will be created to reflect the grant money revenue of $210,000 into one account and expense of $210,000 into another.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-595 is to accept an undertaking and security for Urban Renewal Parcel 27 in SP 4-2. The applicant is Brooklyn Timber LLC. And the UR, it's just UR parcels, I do not have an address on this. It is map 16, blocks 47, lots 11 to 18, and it's for $13,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-596 is to accept undertaking and security for Urban Renewal Parcel 156 in SP 1 through 2. This is also for Brooklyn Timber LLC. This is for map 455, block 43, but this is lots 5 through 14, and this is for $12,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-597 is to accept undertaking and security for Urban Renewal Parcel 19 in EH13. And this is for Jorge Cruz. It is map 445, and it's for lots 215 to 219, in the amount of $14,400.
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on a second, John. That one you're doing right now, the one you're doing right now is actually 123 Town Lane.
Yes, 123 Town Lane.
So we're going to amend the title on that resolution.
Second as amended.
And the next resolution too, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
So Resolution 2021-598 is again, accepting security and undertaking for Urban Renewal Parcel 20 and 8 on 1. This is for Gabriel de Silva. This is for Gabrielle de Silva and this is, um, is there an address with this, Carol?
John, I have to get in there. John, do you have an address on that one? That's the mailing address.
I put the documents, they should be in your office, the actual documents.
I can read.
I'll amend it when I go back into the, send for the road.
You want me to get?
Or I'll just take that out of there altogether. I'll just take the Lincoln Avenue out of this one.
Second as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
Um, so now we can move into exec session and I move to enter into an executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property, to discuss the litigation strategy and the Ocean View Terrace matter, and to discuss personnel in Human Services Department and to receive advice from counsel. It is now 3:11. When would you like to convene?
Agreed with that.
All right. Exec session. We have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Be well, everyone. Stay safe. Take care, taking care of others.